Okay.
It is 7:08 and we do have a quorum. So I would like to call the meeting to order at this point. And, well, yes, I am calling the meeting to order although my computer isn't working so well. If I remember right, the first thing on the agenda tonight, even prior to the pledge, I think as we have it on the list, is to swear in our two student members of the board who we were unable to swear in at the September meeting. The student members whose votes are recorded and also can weigh in on the debate during the meeting are here tonight. They're Henry Pryne and Xander Long. And Terry Bailey is here as a justice of the peace and a notary to provide the swearing in.
I state your name.
I, Henry Pryne.
Do solemnly swear or affirm
Solemnly affirm.
That I will faithfully execute the office
That I will faithfully execute the office.
Of the Burlington Board of School Commissioners
Burlington Board of School Commissioners.
To the best of my judgment and ability
To the best of my judgment and ability.
According to law
According to law.
So help me God, we're under the pains and penalties of perjury.
So help me God, we're under the pains and penalties of perjury.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
So next item on the agenda, if we could all rise for the pledge of the week.
The paper's probably going around.
Who calls the roll? Terry usually or David?
David has been.
Here.
Mr. Chason?
Here.
Mr. Curry?
Here.
Mr. Del Duca?
Mr. Evans?
Mr. Grimm?
Here.
Mr. Halliday?
Here.
Mr. Jenkins?
Here.
Mr. Cranichfeld?
Here.
Mr. Mattson?
Here.
Mr. O'Rourke?
Here.
Mr. Pillsbury?
Here.
Mr. Stoll?
Here.
Mr. Truman?
Here.
And Mr. Wu Ting, Super Representative of Law and Super Representative of Prime.
Here.
Thank you. Just let me ask you, has this gone around or which direction should it go?
No, it stopped at that.
Okay. At this point, I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda. Motion made by Commissioner Grimm, seconded by Commissioner Cranichfeld. Are there any amendments to tonight's agenda? Seeing none, all in favor of the agenda as moved, say aye. 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 All opposed? So we have an agenda for the evening. The third item on the agenda is our public comment section. This is the time of the meeting where we invite members of the general public to address the board on any issue they may wish. It is not a time in which the board will engage in public debate, but it is a time when we can hear from the public and hear comments and take them under consideration as we move forward with board business. I did not see any sign up at this point. If maybe, Terry, is there any sign up at this point? Without any sign up, if anybody would like to speak, they can just come up to the mic. Please state your name. And in general, with our public comment, we try to hold comments to three minutes, given the nature of the business of the district and the need to hear from as many people as possible. Thank you.
My name is Martha Lang and I live on Colchester Avenue. First of all, I want to thank all of you for responding to my emails and I know how hard you're working and it's going for a very good cause. I'm here to speak to you tonight regarding the vote that you're going to take tonight on the option to purchase St. Joseph's School. My one question is, what do you plan to do with St. Joseph's School? It can't be used for clerical administrative purposes and there are already two schools down in that area within a half a mile of St. Joseph's. I have tried to get a copy of the option that you're going to be voting on tonight and apparently it doesn't exist yet. It's my understanding that an option to purchase property has two main points. One, the price that you are agreeing to buy the property at and the length at which this option will be good for, six months, three months. That wasn't available to me. As I'm sure all of you know, this land transaction has gone from 3.5 million up to 4.5 million. That's an increase of a million dollars. And as far as I can tell, there are only two sheets of paper to support this transaction. One is a summary page for the value of the real estate and the other one is a summary page of probable prices for the construction. That's a lot of money to spend with only two pages of support documents. And I don't know if you're aware of it, but there seems to be some opposition quite a bit to the school buying St. Joseph's. And there are nonprofit organizations in that building now that work with the area low-income population who are very concerned about what's going to happen to them. So my main question is, and I know that you can't answer me, but I do want to put it forward to you, is what is St. Joseph's going to be used for? And once again, I want to say to everybody who has helped me, I deeply appreciate you responding to my emails. It's not an easy job that you have and I really want to work with you to make the schools in Burlington better. Thank you very, very much. Thank you.
Anyone else, please, again, step to the mic. Introduce yourself.
Hello. My name's Jim Podrowski. I'm an Old North End resident.
I'm sorry, Jim, I missed the last name?
Podrowski.
Thank you.
I'm an Old North End resident. I'm here because of the purchase of St. Joseph's School also. Hey, what are you guys going to use it for? Are you going to use it for administration? I think that's a very poor idea. In the Old North End, we don't really have enough parking for the people that are there then. Now, I personally think if you guys use it for an administrate, try to use it for an administration building, it will cause parking and traffic problems in that neighborhood. That's all I have to say about this issue. I'm personally against it unless you guys use it for actually kids. Thank you.
Any other members of the public? We do have noted after this, board reflection, which is a time where there can be board comment related in general to what we may have heard during the public comment session. And I guess I would make one comment to some, to one issue that was raised, which is the proposed vote on the agenda tonight is whether or not to enter into the option, which does have a cost, a price on the property and a timeframe attached to it. But there is no option at this point because we have not, the board has not authorized the school district to enter into any sort of a contract. So unless the board had actually authorized through a vote, which is on the agenda tonight, no option would exist yet at this point. So I just wanted to reflect on that particular issue. At this point, we had, we have the opportunity to hear a presentation on the Mayor's Accessibility Committee and Miriam.
Is it a chance for you to do just an announcement? I hope this was done right now?
Yeah, if it's in connection to this, absolutely. And I think it is, if I remember what you said.
Sort of, but I thought this was just a time where any board person could make announcements?
Well, I would typically wait until board report for that, Miriam, which is the next item on the agenda, if it's just a general board announcement. Board reflection usually is directly in response to public comment.
Okay.
And then board report, we would just, we can have items.
But hold on, this is, oh, okay. All right, well, actually, this isn't actually reflecting to what's been said, but it's a reflection about what's going to be said.
Okay.
Do you want me to?
Yeah, please, go ahead.
Okay. So I just wanted to make an announcement that this month is Disability Awareness Month. And for anyone who is not aware of that, it's been going on for years. It's something that our government actually votes on each year and they voted to do this. So what it is, is really a time to try and just increase our awareness of disability in our community. One of the things I think a lot of people may not be aware of is that about 18% of our community, and that includes veterans, adults, children, people of all cultures and races, would self-identify as having some type of disability. In that group of people, those people who have a disability and self-identify that on general earn half of what their non-disabled peers do and more, and are in poverty more than double their non-disabled peers are. So I think it's a, it's a very important thing for us to be aware of as a school district since we are helping children to go out into the world. The other thing is in our own district, about 14% of our population of students qualifies for a 504 or an IEP plan. So it's a very important piece just in terms of the numbers that we are dealing with here in Burlington. So I wanted to encourage everybody to go out of their way, try and learn a little something about disability this month. UVM has a great program. Starting this Friday, there are some options for people to come and take part in different activities. So I'd encourage people to look at that. I also just wanted to say one thing about that, although in our school, we didn't do anything, our district, we didn't do anything specific around Disability Awareness Month. We do have some really exciting news in our district about that, which is, you can look right up here. Thank you, Paul. This is a picture of Flynn's new fully accessible playground. To my knowledge, it's the only fully accessible playground in the state.
There's one at the fort.
Is there one at the fort also?
Yes.
Okay, so it's the second one, thank you, but there aren't many. It's a really wonderful playground. It hasn't had its official opening yet, but the, about six years ago, the idea was hatched by some parents. They did all the fundraising, I think raised about $50,000 and worked with architects and created this wonderful space, which is good for all the kids, disability or no disability. So I just wanted to applaud the Flynn School for stepping forward on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Ralph?
Thank you, Commissioner Stoll, that was wonderful. Usually I get up in front of these boards and committees and start from scratch, but I think the school board has done a lot of good work to prime the pump, as we say, regarding disability awareness and we appreciate that. Would you like me to state my name for the record?
Yeah, it would be great, yeah, because I was just asked, in fact, by Superintendent Collins, who doesn't know you.
You know, I must be psychic. Maybe it's the five years on Planning Commission. It's Ralph Monte Fusco. I am co-chair of the newly resuscitated Advisory Committee on Disabilities. The other co-chair is Patrick Standen, who's with the adapted sports organization. You may remember from the marathon, he was the guy with the bicycle, hand-powered bicycle that was featured in the article. And he does a lot regarding adaptive sports. In fact, they're going to have something called sled hockey at Letty Arena coming up. So we're the two co-chairs. This committee existed back when the Americans with Disabilities Act was first passed in 1990. The city formed a committee on disability, they named some people to it. It basically addressed the issues regarding compliance with the ADA and possible legal inconsistencies that had to be fixed. And then it atrophied. I actually have a report from 1990 produced by the Planning Commission that's ways we can address disability issues in the city. And it's got like dial phones and thermo faxes in it and stuff like that. The committee atrophied. I started doing advocacy for the MS Society. As part of that, became part of a larger group that met in Burlington that was sponsored by the Center for Independent Living. And one of the things that came out of that is that the Burlington Committee had atrophied. There were two or three people on the list who had since died. And so we wanted to revitalize the committee. We approached the city, they agreed to do so. They reconstituted it, so there are members of key departments within the city who also serve on the committee as well as advocates within the community. And what we're trying to do is find ways to address accessibility across the spectrum in the city. And I'll give you a quick blurb from the mission statement, which says, "Increase opportunities for people with disabilities and meet the needs of people with disabilities by encouraging full and equal participation in all aspects of life. This includes the identification and removal of architectural, procedural, programmatic, attitudinal, and communication barriers." That's what we're trying to do. Essentially, we're trying to be in the middle between the general public and the city and possibly businesses and individuals. So there's a certain amount of, at this point, low-hanging fruit that we can do, that we can go out and address. We know the city is never going to be 100% compliant with the Americans with Disabilities Act. There's no way you can like go through and tear down buildings like the high school and rebuild it to be compliant. But if we can raise awareness, like Miriam was talking about, we can raise awareness then as decisions are made and plans are made and budgets are brought up, people will at least be aware of the issues and of the needs and maybe we can at least get those prioritized within the process. There's also attitudinal issues. I know for a fact that there are people that do not participate in a lot of this daily civic life that we all do because they have disabilities or they have a family member with disabilities. That's the kind of thing that when I talk about inclusion, that's what I mean. We don't want a family with two kids to stay home because one has a disability that makes it very difficult to go out and enjoy life. And things like this playground are key because you don't have to be disabled to use this playground. So it's now inclusive. There was work done at North Beach, to throw my pen away, there was work done at North Beach to put a ramp in and a mat on the beach so that people can get into the water. But there are also other issues. People have vision issues. There's a matter of lighting. There's a matter of, I guess you could say, people who deal with claustrophobia. You go to a restaurant downtown, they say, "We have an accessible entrance. Go around the back, down that alley, come in that door, through the kitchen, we'll get you through the kitchen. And then once you get inside, we'll move the tables out of your way." That is an inclusion. Inclusion is, I want to go to the place, I go in. You want to go to the place, you go in. That's what we're trying to reach. We need people to understand what the existing processes are within the city. We had an incident where someone was complaining about having spoken to the mayor before he got elected about a sidewalk out in front of their house and it hadn't been addressed. It was a year and it hadn't been addressed. Well, turns out, the Department of Public Works has a tracking system. You report things to them, they put it into the tracking system and prioritize it according to budget and need. And it had never been put into the system. So there's an example of where we can get things done simply by using what is already in existence. Doesn't make sense to have a lot of rules and regulations if people aren't aware of them and they don't know how to use them and they aren't followed up. Ned Holt, the building inspector, is on the committee. There are people from SITO and other branches of the government on there. And so this is an intro to let you know, we exist. I know the mayor came here and did a tour of the school. We exist, we're as much a resource for you as a resource for people to get to you. Keisha Ram is the person from SITO who was assigned to staff the committee. So if you need to reach us, several of you know how to reach me and if not, you can reach us through Keisha. And our next board meeting is 4:00 to 6:00 PM on October the 15th in Room 12 of City Hall. And I believe we're going to hear from Chapin Spencer, the new Public Works Commissioner, and possibly Norm Baldwin also. So, I mean, we're there, we're there as much for you. I don't want you to think that we're out there to attack you, we're not. We want inclusion. As someone with gray hair, I relate to that. Senior is in the list of people who need access and need inclusion. There's also the issue, and this will be the end here, of people being able to work within the city and people with disabilities being able to work. I know one teacher who's a speech therapist who goes around from school to school and has a lot of trouble going from school to school. Certain schools, certain entrances, she has to like call from the parking lot to get a door open and stuff. This is the kind of thing that grinds you down and isolates you. And that's not what we're about as a city. So, thank you, we're here. We hope to hear from you and you will be hearing from us.
Ralph, if you could take a minute if there are any other questions from the board?
Certainly.
I don't know if anyone had, I mean, I have one, but if anyone else? Ginny?
I just want to make a comment. I appreciate you coming and I appreciate the committee existing. For those of you who do follow the superintendent's blog, I actually blogged earlier this week on how few, how difficult it is for people with disabilities to get jobs. And so it's a place to look for some information as well.
Great.
Now, the school also, it does have right now participation on this committee, is that right?
Commissioner Stoll has, I don't know if it's officially or unofficially, has kind of been our liaison.
My understanding also, staff, you said Mark Irish?
Mark Irish.
Yes, and Mark Irish is on the committee.
At the beginning, it was on Knights when he was at ITC.
Right, right.
But I think that's been changed.
Okay.
So as far as like, you know, capital budget planning and stuff like that, he's there to address that.
Okay. Keith?
I just heard on VPR this noon that there's a new website. I don't know, of course, I didn't pay attention, but where people who are, who are trying to go to restaurants need to know whether it's accessible or not can make comments. Have you, are you familiar with that?
Absolutely.
Would you give the name of it, please?
It fell out of my brain and thank you for putting it back in. It's called Accessible Adventures. And if you search on Accessible Adventures, it will come up. It was developed by the Vermont, Silk, Statewide Independent Living Council, as opposed to VCIL. But anyway, it's called Accessible Adventures, it's a website. You can go in there and you can rank your experience. And it isn't just for restaurants, it's for buildings, parks, anything you do. You can rank your experience as far as accessibility. The aim is that, first of all, if someone's coming in to town and has certain needs, they can access this website, once it gets populated with enough entries, to say, "I want to, you know, my, my mother's 90 and she uses a walker, I want to go to dinner on Church Street." You can look up and go to the right one. But also, when a business gets a ranking, gets a review in Accessible Adventures, they get sent an email saying, "This has been entered." They can then look at it and if they wish to, they can address it. And if suddenly, you know, 35 entries all come complaining about the bathroom, they might want to take action. So it's called Accessible Adventures. And we need it populated, so it isn't just for negative things. If you have positive experiences, please go in there and put them in.
Anything else? Ralph, thank you very much for the time this evening and I'm sure we all will find additional to pick, sorry, Rebecca.
Just to clarify, Accessible Adventures VT, I think? I just Googled it.
Yeah, I think if you just go Accessible Adventures, it'll come up. It might come up under Silk, it'll come up various ways. But I think the actual website is probably accessibleadventuresvt.org.com, something like that. Thank you.
We're running into power issues up here at the front, so we have people running around a little bit. The next item on the agenda is board report, at which time board members, if there are events, if there are events they have attended, if there are events upcoming within the district they'd like to speak about. One item that we had put on the agenda, I know at least last Monday, there was a significant meeting related to co-curricular and athletics in which the community came together. I know Ben was at the meeting for at least part of the meeting and Amy Mellon-Campus here and I had asked her if she would speak a bit to it because she was there for the entire meeting, if we could get, Ben, I don't know if you want to, or maybe Amy, if you want to just describe a bit of what occurred at the meeting. And it's been something, obviously with budget and everything that we've been talking about a fair amount, so would be great to hear. And then Ben, if you have anything else to add.
Thank you. Last Monday evening, we had about 50 to 60 parents, both representing middle school and high school athletics and co-curriculars. While we focused initially in on athletics, I really see this as a co-curricular opportunity to really understand and recognize and constantly improve the programs that we offer. The, there were a variety of interests, I think, represented at the meeting. A number of people had gotten involved in the spring in support of having a full-fledged array of programs that can serve a variety of students in the school. So it was, was wonderful to see their participation and wanting to continue to be involved and continue that work. We had middle school parents who were interested in how middle, high school athletics work and maybe five or six that are, will have students soon at the high school level, so we appreciated that level of interest. And we also had parents who were either focused on particular programs or just in general wanting to make sure that our, the organization of our athletic program is, is what it should be, that resources are being used well, that we're soliciting and recruiting the participation that we need for, for all sports. So it was a combination of topics. We broke into small groups so that groups of parents could prioritize and give us some of the top topics that we could enter in on. And we also agreed to take the first step, which will happen tomorrow morning, actually, at 7:30 AM, if any of you are interested in coming back. We'll be reviewing the mission philosophy statement of our co-curricular program that we've had for a number of years. And I think this is an opportunity to review it and revamp it and make sure that it continues to represent what we want our program to be. And that, that statement, I think, will be very critical as we look at other components of the program this year. Program evaluation, coaches' evaluation, the use of resources, tracking our participation numbers and all. So we're going to jump in with some concrete action by looking at this mission statement and then there'll be some ongoing meetings. We will continue to look at what structure will best serve this interest. Not a lot of schools have advisory committees for co-curriculars, but I, we've been doing some research on that to really understand what the opportunities are for that. Unfortunately, most of those schools have very, it's very small committees, like two parents, two students, two coaches. Right now, I sense a lot of interest in the community of wanting to know and understand what we're doing, so I'd rather keep it as open as possible and have as many people involved. Ben, would you say some other things that occurred to you about the meeting?
Well, I was really taken by the number of people that turned out. You know, there was a lot of talk when we're going on about this at the budget, but then the rubber hits the road when, you know, who wants to keep coming up, showing up at meetings? And when you get, you know, 50 to 60 people that were pretty well engaged in it, I think that shows there's something going on out there. There's a desire to know, a desire to participate and a desire to support. And that's what I came away with. It was after we broke down into the smaller groups, our tables was kind of talking about the philosophy and a theme that kept coming up was just how to build a stronger culture of support for not just the athletics and co-curricular programs, but for the students and the students participating in those programs and how it all came down to, you know, at least for the high school side of it, seahorse pride by the community. And something like that gets roots. And if you can grow that and you've got enough people involved in it, where, one of the things that I think will come out of this is, maybe you'll have, you know, there's always the risk of too many cooks in the kitchen. I suspect we'll be able to navigate that and you'll have a broad-based sense of community support for some of this, which then leads, I think, to a much wider area of community understanding of what's really going on in the school district, how athletics and co-curriculars are a part of the whole education system of what's, you know, means to get educated in Burlington, which then grows, goes to broader support for our schools by the community as a whole. So I think this has the potential to do some really great things. And I appreciate that.
I might just add that this is our homecoming week, so I invite you to participate in some of our activities this, this weekend. There'll be a whole array of athletic contests and we have our big homecoming dance in the gym this year on Saturday evening. Pardon?
The game with.
And we have some students.
Not in the gym, for the dance.
Yes. We have some new student interest in really thinking about how we're going to approach the beginning of the football game. So if you come about quarter to seven, you'll see a bit of a splash that we're trying to increase. you'll see a bit of a splash that we're trying to increase some pride and, and some fun activities related to the football game. So you're all invited. Thank you.
And as, at least as it relates to sports, there is the football game on Friday. There's field hockey. There's a cross-country meet, which is at Mount Mansfield. Volleyball, which is not a varsity sport, but there is a volleyball match. Again, boys soccer. And then on Saturday, we have girls soccer followed along with the homecoming dance, as well as I, I would say, I've actually, and maybe I'm mistaken because I'm paying more attention, but I don't think so. My kids have been in the high school for four years. And this year, I started to see more activity from my kids. So maybe there's some play, oh, no, already. Any other questions related to this? I mean, because it does connect with the budget issue that was being discussed this spring. Okay. Anything else on the board's side for things to report of either, as I said, events, things you've seen in the district, reports from schools, anything that may be coming up or has come up? Bernie?
The Hunt Harvest Dinner, the 24th. And yeah, it's a great event. A lot of participation by the kids, all the way from growing the, the food that you eat to preparing it, to making menus and table, table settings and everything. So it's a, it's a great community event. I think they had 600 people last year. So, so anyway, the 24th and, I don't know, I think it's around 6 o'clock, 5:30, 6 o'clock.
Champagne has one coming up.
S.A.'s Harvest Run, 1K and 5K is Saturday at the Intervale, which is the fundraiser for the school.
Anything else from the board? Oh, sorry, Keith?
Edmonds Elementary Open House is going to be Thursday. It starts off with a meal at 5:30. I do want to say that I attended the Edmonds Middle School Open House last Thursday night. And what I heard here about the advisory athletic from the, at the height of that meeting, we, it was reinforced, I heard, I heard a lot about it. There's a lot of excitement about that work at, among the middle school parents at wherever I was. And I also, there's a very dynamic tech ed program at that middle school. It's, everyone needs to go down and see his, what's his name? Kevin? Eric, Eric. Eric, you should really talk to Eric. He's got an aquaculture and he's just got a, a grant to get a 3D printer. I couldn't tell you all the stuff that he told me because he really told me a lot about all the programs there. Very exciting program at Edmonds Middle School.
Thank you. Anything else? Eric?
Sure, guess what? I, I hope people know this, but tomorrow night is the Calendar 2.0 discussion here at BHS. I don't know what time.
Good point. I think it probably was going to come up through the curriculum, but I think that yes.
Okay.
Everybody, remember, I know a number of places it has been posted around to make sure that people are aware. I heard rumor that they're expecting up to 700 people.
Here?
They have, yeah, it's going to be in the auditorium.
Move to the auditorium.
And my understanding was at Essex, there were over, around 400.
There are a lot.
And I don't know if CBU, which is Thursday night, I, I don't know about the numbers. What?
We've got to win.
Oh, what? The biggest attendance wins? Okay. Any other comments? Seeing none, I would hand the floor over to Ginny for the monthly superintendent report.
Thank you. I will speak briefly on Calendar 2.0. Tomorrow is the third out of four forums. There is also a website where you can leave comments. Tomorrow is designed, has been moved to the auditorium, has new facilitators, and is designed for people to speak to through the mic, through an open mic system. But you have to sign up to speak. And there will also be index cards. It is impossible to listen to 700 people or even 400 people. So there will also be cards there available for people to jot down comments. I will also tell you that the superintendents did meet today and recognize that the community, first of all, really appreciate the community involvement and the interest in this topic, but recognize that the community readiness is not yet there for 1415. So 1415 is not where the superintendents are headed, but the conversation continues. And through November, we will be reviewing all of the, the feedback. There's just, it's so numerous. So we're reviewing all of the feedback and, and coming out with next steps for continued engagement and discussion after our November meeting. I don't have an exact date for that.
Can I ask a clarifying point there? Because I felt like you said something that I understood very differently.
Okay.
You said 1415 is not where we think we're headed right now.
Yes.
That is a different understanding than I think that a lot of the community has had.
Absolutely. Because that was a vote that was taken this morning.
Okay.
By the regional superintendents. Hot off the press for you.
To me, it is new. I didn't, I had not at all heard that. In fact, I had a very different conversation with a member of the community today related to that. So that's good to know.
So, so that was just this morning. And again, we've had two out of four forums. We are very interested in moving forward with the discussion about what use of time is the best, most efficient use for student learning. But we recognize that 1415 is not where the community is ready. And so 1415 is off the table. The conversation continues.
Keith?
The biggest, I was at the Essex High School last, last week. And obviously, the biggest, biggest message I heard over and over again was not, it's not a done deal. And what, what I was not hearing, and I'm hoping that Ms. Collins will provide this tomorrow night, is the, the real reasons, the numbers of students, the reasons that we need to have this. I did not hear that. And I, I think people were really confused about why change if there's no, no research, there's, what is, we need to be strong, if you, if you're proposing this, the superintendents need to be stronger in the reason why they think it's important.
Do you want me to?
No, I don't want to.
Because I will get on a soapbox.
I'm sure that you'll tell me tomorrow night.
I think that, yeah, was offered up as it's something that the community is looking to hear, not necessarily us at the board right now.
Thank you. Okay.
Any other?
Yes.
Do you mind if I just ask a particular issue that people want to, was there anything else in 2.0 anybody might want to ask right now?
Please forgive my casualness, but my foot is hurting. So it's on the chair.
Okay. Yeah, Liz?
Can I just ask, is there, is it, would it be possible to receive citations for the data that this is based on, that the construct is based on?
I'd say that that's one of the comments to bring forward. The short answer is, this particular calendar doesn't have research. The research exists around regression in the summer. The research exists around brain science and how students learn. And there is research that also is around the, a variety of calendar constructs across the country. This particular calendar is a proposal that grasps at all of that. So I think that's a question to put forward on, you know, that, that has come forward to us that we'll be responding to.
I guess I wasn't really planning to speak. I was planning to listen tomorrow, but.
You don't need to. It's come up. We, we recognize.
And people have asked where's the data. So I thought it'd be helpful to have some links from you, you know, whatever the research is that is linked to calendars and that sort of thing.
Yeah, I would recommend that you go to the webpage for Calendar 2.0.
Does that have it? Yeah, I looked around.
We feel that it does, and others feel that it doesn't. So we have to clean that up.
Yeah, yeah.
Hi, Ellen. I, I wanted to have a bit of a discussion about 2.0 as opposed to just asking questions. Is this a proper time to do that?
We actually talked about that at planning. And I think that because of the forums coming up yet, and we talked about it in particular with Patrick through curriculum and things like that, we, curriculum is probably going to talk about it and potentially have what might be a board resolution or something like that, that we brought to the table in November. And then there would be probably a formal resolution, at which time we would have a formal board discussion in public related to this. And we talked about whether or not it would make sense tonight. A board member certainly could make a resolution tonight, but as we were talking about it, we thought it might, many of us thought, well, I think I could be better informed if I waited until after the rest of the forums.
If I may, I believe curriculum might have been continuing discussion next month?
Yeah.
So we had talked about bringing up a resolution from curriculum that has yet to be worded so that, you guys are stealing my thunder from my curriculum, so that, so that we would be able to have a formal board discussion, that it would be limited to the board and everyone would have a chance. The decision to move was to bring that up from the curriculum, at curriculum next week, with the idea that we would raise that at the November meeting so that we would have the full, the chance to hear the, the full comments from the forum. That was my, my reasoning behind it, but I fully intend it. A resolution, maybe not a resolution that ultimately would be adopted in any way, but to allow a full discussion.
Gotcha. Okay, you want to make sure, yeah, that's.
I appreciate.
Yep.
Thank you very much.
Ginny?
Continue?
Yeah.
Okay. Diversity equity update. The Equity Council has developed a number of conversations on race equity and cultural competence for the schools to use this year. Early feedback to these units being discussed in the schools has been positive. Comments I've heard back from principals and teachers are that they feel the unit, the first unit anyway, was very well organized, designed for good conversations. Schools are once again required to hold monthly conversations as we seek to improve our culture and understanding of race inequity. And what we discovered last year, particularly with the loss of Dan Bellon mid-year, is that we had kind of, we needed more guidance on what those conversations were to be. Principals can veer from those conversations, but it is an opportunity to create some equity in conversations as well across the district. I believe that is our plan to share these conversations with the Diversity Equity Committee as well, just so you can see what we're talking about. Last, yes?
Can I just ask, this, these are conversations at faculty level or at the staff level?
Correct. Faculty, staff level.
But not, we're not talking about, you said curriculum, you're talking about that level of curriculum, not student curriculum?
Correct.
Okay. Because I think that's something that, maybe, maybe this is work that needs to be done in, thinking in master plan first, so that, so that faculty's ready to hold those. But I think ultimately, our responsibility is not to educate the teachers, but to educate the kids around that.
That's right. That's right. Last week's ELL forum was well-attended with parents from several communities, listening to the recommendations and providing feedback. It was also well-covered by the press. I, I sent you some links over the, well, yesterday, and then today, VPR story came out as well. Some Somali parents are asking for an individual meeting with administration at Burlington High School, Linda Walslaven and Henry Sparks. And that meeting, just as of this afternoon, we were able to kind of ferret through, there were some difficulties in scheduling that meeting and getting information on it, but I believe that has now been resolved. Nikki will be leading the principal's search advisory committee as we open the search for the Hunt Middle School position. And we'll be updating you with that information shortly. We are also discussing what other administrative positions are open, as Nikki will be leading in her, given her position. D'Verne Bell, it starts later this month, and she has already had a couple of media interviews from out in Seattle. We also are bringing Washington Consulting back to provide a training on November 13 and 14 for 40, 40 more faculty and staff. We had budgeted for two visits by Washington Consulting this year. And I just want to point out, you know, that we are pleased, I may have said this already, forgive me if I did, that our ELL students did so well on the WEATA test, the English proficiency test in the spring. Our students exceeded the goal set for next year's testing with last year's test. So we are very pleased with the, with the progress that is made on English proficiency. We also are hearing a lot of good response from the community on the new Burlington High School report card, progress reporting system that we worked on with New American Parents and the Parents for Change group, that helps parents understand how their child is doing in comparison with where their child is trying to get to. And I see, while it's still early, we've only used it once, I see a lot of potential benefit throughout other parts of the district. We're having conversations about maybe that needs to be expanded. Any questions on diversity equity?
When is the training?
Washington Consulting is November 13th and 14th. Partnership for Change update, on November 2nd, hold the date, put it in your calendar, here in this room? No. Is it in this room, Amy?
Yeah.
Yeah. Is it here again? Okay. On November 2nd, we will be having a community learning conversation from, that might be Winuski.
I'm sorry, it's Winuski.
So hold the date, but not the location. So on November 2nd, we'll be having another community learning conversation called Imagine a School System Designed for All Learners. And it's a follow-up to the work that was done last February, the continued learning conversations and looking at our graduation expectations. Partnership for Change has hired an AmeriCorps position who will focus on storytelling in the ninth grade academies at Burlington High School and the English classes at middle, at Winuski Middle School and High School, and will be collaborating with the Young Writers Project. I think that through our conversations about race inequity over the last couple of years, there's been a lot of talk about the need for storytelling. And, and not just data, but what's the story behind the data? Who are we? Who are our kids? Who is our community? And this is really exciting to me, that Partnership for Change has taken that step forward to help us start to create those stories. Last Friday, I attended the Teacher Union Reform Network meeting along with Hal Colston, Bob Abbey, and James Pope from Winuski High School. It was in Cambridge, Massachusetts. We went down and back in one day. And we participated in a panel discussion on the Living Contract, the 80% rule, as we call it, that we just passed with the BEA and our work with Adam Rubansky. And I, I just want to let you know that we were really well-received. We were on a panel with two other topics, and we got the entire attention on the panel. All the questions were directed towards us. And it was very well-received. And we've received many contacts since then with people interested in hearing more about, about the Living Contract and the 80% piece of our contract that we put in place. Also last weekend, 12 students from Burlington High School and Winuski High School, along with Will Andrews and Erica Lowe, attended the Nellie May Education Foundation Youth Leadership Institute in Manchester. Coming up in a few weeks, we have a large contingency as well. Kathy Chason is one of them, participating in the Nellie May Cross-Site Learning Institute. Last year, this Cross-Site Learning Institute, which brings together all four districts who received the grant, was just incredibly powerful. Not only because we learned what the other four towns are doing, but our opportunity to come together away from our everyday life and really focus on what we're doing was incredibly powerful. And Burlington and Winuski school districts will be asking our school boards, that's you, to participate in a joint communication session this winter around communication and the Partnership for Change work. And we don't have a date yet. We're thinking January. But we're going to ask the two boards to come together and, and spend one day together, very likely a weekend day, if we can make that work. We understand that we won't get 100%, but as much as we can. Partnership for Change questions?
Henry?
There is an implementation team meeting this Thursday.
Implementation team meeting this Thursday? Please watch, and they are open. Please watch the Partnership for Change VT website for all implementation team meetings. Thank you, Henry.
I have a question about the questions you received related to the contract. Were more of them related to the 80% rule, to our beginnings at the Living Contract? Or what exactly were the questions related to?
The questions were related to the 80% rule. How does it work? How do, what kinds of things are teachers empowered to change within their individual schools? There also was some interest in the Living Contract piece, which took compensation off the table and, and allowed the contract to focus on other working conditions that are student-related. But most of the questions were around the 80%.
Okay.
Okay. Enrollment update. Our kindergarten numbers continue to hover around 300 yet again. This is our fifth year in a row. And we continue to see growth in the district. Paul Irish is heading a, a study that is looking for ITC committee, looking at our enrollment trends, as well as our capacity within our schools. Looking forward, we already recognize that we're going to have 37 students, too many, in sixth grade next year, and, meaning more than this year, and, and we're, we're full. And 50 the year after that, just looking at our current trends. And so we're really wanting to look at what our capacity is and start having conversations at the board level, continue having conversations at the board level on how we meet this, this growth within Burlington schools.
How many, how many sixth grade classes do we have?
I don't have that tip of my tongue. Oh, Paul does. Six at each school, six between them, three per school.
Six at each school.
Six at each school. I believe that's correct.
Okay. And this year, the current enrollment shows 255. So if you're looking at six, you're looking at about 21 a class. So the numbers you're talking about now would add about four to five per class across the district if we were not to expand the sixth grade. Okay.
Correct. On the agenda, it says ELL forum, but I already spoke to that, so I'll skip over it. The impact of the federal shutdown on school revenue. I had shared this information in an email. There's not a whole lot of new information. As far as the, our, our grants, such as Title I and IDEA for special ed, we receive those October 1st payments. So we're good there. School lunch and school breakfast was unaffected with the initial shutdown, but if the shutdown runs 30 days or more, we will not be receiving the federal reimbursement for school lunches, which will impact us significantly. The E-Rate program currently is unaffected in the shutdown, but again, the longer the shutdown occurs, it could affect reimbursements. And we are starting to have conversations with the city. And we are starting to have conversations with the city and, and with our legislative offices about what effect the shutdown might have on our own cash flow issues if it continues beyond thirty days. So, it's, it's a, it's a scary thing. It's not just something that's happening there in Washington. It can affect us right here as well.
What kind of options would we have if we have cash flow concerns? I mean, have you talked to the city about, you know, is, are there things that could be done within, you know, the way the city manages cash even right now with us separately? Or is this something we might have to go outside cash pool for the city, or what kinds of things have been looked at?
We would, we would need to go outside. What the charter says is that if we do not have cash to meet our needs, then the city must borrow on our behalf. And so, we're starting to have those conversations. But we want to look into where we think the impact, any impacts might be felt, like I already mentioned, school lunch. If we don't get the reimbursement, then that's an area that, you know, we need to cover.
And has the state provided any guidance if there's going to be any potential issues and where they might come? I mean, if we, I think we're looking at this, when we look at school lunches, that's something we understand locally, but is there anything we might not understand at the state level?
The only guidance I've had from the state is that the Title I and IDEA grants will be fine. The October 1st grants, which is the start of the new fiscal year, were met. I have not received any additional guidance.
Are you looking like you have a question, Patrick?
Yeah. Is this, if, is this something that would, assuming the government ever restarts again, that we would be, for which we'd be reimbursed?
That would be the hope. That it would be a delayed reimbursement is the hope. We have one last.
Okay. Go ahead.
So, one thing that's not on the agenda, but I wanted to bring to your attention, is that parent conferences are October 17th and 18th. Some schools may choose to use their building professional development time on the 16th as well, and some schools stretch out the conferences for a week or more. Admin's complex will have no water for the first two hours on October 18th. If all goes well, it's only two hours. And we chose, it, it's to work on our sprinkler system, which is a life safety issue, and we cannot delay it, but we chose that particular day because we knew there would be very few students and parents in the building, at least for any length of time. And teachers have mostly worked their conferences around that timeframe anyway. But it has been noted in newsletters and at the open houses, and I just wanted to bring it up here as well. That's all I got.
Anything else? Anything for, or any other questions right now for Jeannie that might relate to this, these, or any other issues? Seeing none, at this point, I would move on to item seven on the agenda, which is the consent agenda, and I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda. Moved by Commissioner, by Keith. Seconded by Bernie. Are there any items on the consent agenda that anyone would like to remove or have separately considered? Liz?
The first ITC minutes just incorrectly stated the motion that I made.
Which particular motion is that?
For the option to purchase.
And is it that the wording is wrong, or is this?
The wording.
If, if it, happy to correct the minutes. But in addition, when that motion does come forward tonight, we have legal advice to change the wording more.
Great.
So, it's up to you, if you want to tell me what the correct wording is, I can easily fix that.
Not if we're going to change it.
I'm sorry?
Not if we're going to change it.
Okay.
That's fine.
Henry?
My name is Jessica Cracked. On the September 17th Curriculum Committee Meeting, I have Xander's last name.
Oh, I thought we fixed that.
Still happening. I don't know.
Which minutes are those? I'm sorry?
Curriculum of September 17th.
We just do that to make sure you really read it.
And today was twin day, right?
Yeah.
In the, in the school, so maybe there was an aspect of that. We're sorry.
Was it really twin day?
It is twin day. It was twin day.
That explains something from home.
Okay.
I have a question about something on this consent agenda, and I don't know that I have to remove it, but maybe I do?
In general, if an item is to, if it's a simple question, we can start with that, and then if it needs to go further, I would.
Okay. I'm just wondering whether the Spanish teacher at Hunt is a replacement?
It was an opening at the very, let me see if I have this right. The Spanish, Hunt has a half-time Spanish position, and at the end of summer, an elementary Spanish teacher resigned her position, I believe it was on August Consent Agenda, to go out of state for Family Matters, which opened a full-time position. The half-time Hunt position teacher asked to move into that, and that transfer already occurred. So, Hunt has been without a Spanish teacher since the start of the school year, and this is a vacancy created by that. So, it's not a new position, it's a vacant position.
Okay. And same with the one Jamie O'Brien, four or five, that's just a replacement, right?
Right. That's usually for a leave when it's an LTC.
All right. That, thank you, that's all I want.
Okay.
And then, just to follow up on that, Kelly Wood is a librarian who also is just notified as she needs to leave the state for family reasons. And so, there will be, later on, a hire to replace her.
Patrick?
I was going to ask about the, it's unusual time to have a resignation contract, yes?
It is very unusual, and generally, it's for emergency reasons.
Okay.
Generally, in, in the state of Vermont, it's actually, you, you can't actually break a contract, it can affect your teacher licensure.
Could lose your licensure.
And, and you could deny this resignation, but I only bring forward the ones that they're leaving the state and it's for an emergency reason. If it's something opened up in the district next door and I like it better, I say no, you've got to wait till next year.
Hearing no other comments, I would ask that all in favor of the consent agenda items, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? So, the consent agenda passes. I'd like to report out on Planning Committee. The first item is that we would, coming out of Planning Committee, we would like to make a motion to allow Jessica Ferber the rights to use the Robert Campbell photos for publishing in her book, with the agreement she return the photos to the district after this use. I should actually ask for a member of the Planning Committee to make this motion, made by Keith and seconded by, is there a second? By Rebecca. And I can, I guess, begin speaking to this. I may as well. When, you received some information today on this, but the, the background is when it was a homeless man, correct, Robert Campbell, when he died, he had taken a significant number of photos that related, in particular, to the world of music, in particular jazz. And a number of years ago, I think Jessica Ferber had worked with us to catalog these photos.
Worked with COTS to catalog.
Worked with COTS, I'm sorry, to catalog these photos. When someone dies intestate, their belongings revert to the schools, and this is what happened in this case. And she worked with COTS, who had physical possession of the photos, to catalog them. And at that time, the board had, at one time or another, we had authorized that she could use the photos for part of a project. She was attempting to sell, which she was unable to sell for a significant period of time, but it did come up again that she would, I mean, she kind of reapproached this, and we thought it required another board vote. And so, this is where this comes from. We also have the, you know, the, the city did put out a, a brief memo from Eileen Blackwood, which we received. I don't know if anybody else, else has any further comment or question about this. Seeing no further, I'm sorry, Liz.
I just wanted to, I mean, I, I don't know if this is the time to say it, but the memo asked for thoughts about what to do for the long run, so I don't know if this is the time to talk about that or not. Do you want to do it as part of the motion discussion?
I, I think it is something separate. I will say there was a similar discussion at, at Planning Committee, and part of the discussion was perhaps just, in fact, you know, seeding, you know, to the, the pictures to COTS in particular, because they were the party who really, you know, he was probably most connected to, and are perhaps would be more, better beneficiaries of the use of the photos, if there is really anything to benefit from, although they're supposed to be quite an interesting set of photos. And that had been a discussion, but I think we, it would be a separate discussion that we may want to have at some point.
Yeah, I would like to have that discussion, because I feel like it's important to actually have an institution that understands how to preserve archives and catalog photographs, which would, to my mind, be something like the UVM, you know, Archive Library, and have professional people understand how to, how to do that. So, I, you know, feel strongly about that and
Yeah.
Have some knowledge of some of this, so.
I think then.
I would like to have that discussion as a, you know, we were asked, so.
Yeah, I was going to say.
Be intentional about it.
Yeah, and I'm thinking here with that comment, that maybe we refer it to, and I, it would seem to me, only because it's infrastructure, or, you know, it relates to property of the schools, that probably the, I think, would refer it to infrastructure to put on the agenda to have the discussion. I would say, you know, as, as soon as feasible within, you know, within your committee. Bernie has agreed?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other comments related to the motion on the table? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. The second piece I'd like to discuss is a bit more of a discussion. There was, we began the process of looking at the recommended priorities for the fiscal fifteen budget, and these were the program priorities. And if you, there was one particular item that was put onto the agenda over the weekend, which were, which were the priorities that were literally just put forward by the three committees that were putting together their lists. These priorities were put forward, I'm sorry, these program recommendations were put forward without priority, with the idea being that the Planning Committee had not heard directly from Finance as to what level of finance, or what kind of goals Finance Committee was going to recommend through this process. Likewise, we wanted the committees to put forward the various recommendations that they had without, you know, without really any concern about saying, okay, this is better than that, or having that discussion yet. Some of the prioritization was to come through, in particular, there's going to be some discussion of finance, of, you know, the level that can be supported, and that was going to be at the, is it the twenty-second Finance Committee meeting? And again, at the Planning Committee, so that by the first, by the next board meeting, this list of program priorities would have a prioritization attached to them. We didn't work to merge what came from the various committees, nor from the community input. If you were not a Planning Committee, I apologize that I only put the collected information from the various surveys, from the parents, the students, as well as some analysis, as well as what came in through the website, onto the website until this morning, but all of that information is out there. But I, I guess the key document to look at is the document that is called, I mean, the document, which is called FY-15 Board Budget Priorities, that first item. And I would put it out there for people, and I don't know if people wanted to have any question or comment. I would welcome members of the Planning Committee to speak to some of what maybe was said if, if people have comments, or if you feel you would like to mention your committee's work that led to this. I would say that there was a fair amount of in-depth input from the various committees on certain things, related to, you know, how, you know, ITC bringing forward their list, curriculum, and diversity also bringing forward their lists. And just would re-stress to the board that, over the next month, please, everyone should also be taking a look at this and thinking in their minds about where priorities would be within the goals the board has, so that as we go into the Finance and Planning Committee meetings before, next month, we would be presenting to the board a collection of these items, along with any other pieces that may be pulled out of the public comment in a prioritized form, as we go into the budget production for fiscal two thousand, oh my gosh, fiscal two thousand and fifteen. And my understanding also that probably, is it the next board meeting at which there was going to be a preliminary view of what the budget would look like done by the district? Or is that, am I off on my timing on that? Kind of for you.
All right. I missed that.
Yeah, no, is the, was there, was it to be according to our?
Our timeline?
Yeah, according to our timeline, right? We were looking to have sort of Budget Draft One actually kind of come through Finance.
That's correct.
The twenty-second.
On the twenty-second, so.
That's correct.
I just kind of want to, I, I would.
And then we'll be asking Finance to schedule another meeting earlier in February or November?
November.
Yeah.
Before, before the next board meeting.
Right.
Okay. So, okay, even before the next board meeting, between the twenty-second?
I don't know if the second meeting will be before the board meeting. That might not be possible.
Okay.
To actually, but certainly before the end of November. I think there needs to be two in November.
Definitely that.
Yeah.
Okay.
Can you clarify what you just said? Because I, first I heard October twenty-second Finance Committee would be to further create prior, priorities on this list, and then I just heard you're going to have the first draft of the budget.
No.
May I?
Go ahead.
So, on October twenty-second, I will, following tonight's meeting, I will be tasked to bring not only the board priorities, but the administration priorities, and merge it all together for the board to see the whole big picture of what the needs are in the district, to Finance, while Finance is also looking at the financial goal that they're presenting to you tonight. And it'll be the first opportunity for the board, everyone who participates in Finance, to start to merge the realities of those two pieces of information. That's so that, one major difference from past budget processes is that you get the big, the full picture before you're starting to, you know, as in the past, usually the full picture came to me, and I brought you my version of what's not. So, the priorities will be guiding how you're, how you are making decisions, financial decisions around prioritization.
So, just to clarify, you're going to bring the administration's proposed budget
Add it to the, no.
To the Finance Committee.
No, not to the, no, not the administration's proposed budget.
No.
The administration's priorities to add to these board priorities.
Okay, so it'll be a list like this.
So, you'll see the full gamut of what.
Gotcha. And then, after October twenty-second, what's the next step? And date, please?
May I look at your?
Yeah.
So, on the timeline that, that you have been given, November 12th, the board reviews that Budget Draft One. So, what comes out of Finance, and I know that Keith would like as many people to join Finance as possible, but what comes out of Finance comes back to the board.
That's why I think there may be need for a second meeting.
There might be, if it's, it's pretty tight.
So, that'll be the actual draft of the full budget.
A Budget Draft One.
Budget Draft One, that reflects the work the Finance Committee has done to set priorities.
And the priorities of these.
Well, yeah, the work you've done. Okay.
And then, following that, there will need to be, the next Finance Committee meeting is November 26th, where what comes out of the board work drives what goes into Budget Draft Two. And Superintendent will present Budget Draft Two to address the board comments on Draft One. The board reviews that at their December meeting, and what comes out of that goes to public hearing on December 17th and 18th. So, you can see the timeline on Board Docs, which, if I may just give you something I learned today, I, I, about Board Docs, if you go into Board Docs, there is a search function, and you can put in, in fact, policies are not searchable. We're fixing that on the website, because policies are on a different website, but all your minutes are searchable, because they're PDFs right in your consent agenda. So, all your minutes, all your documents, they are searchable with key, you know, keywords under the search function on Board Docs.
Any other further questions about this, Mary?
Maybe you said this, and I missed this a bit, but so this document that we have in front of us now, are we going to do any more fine-tuning of it, or explaining of it, or are we going to wait and just sort of look at everything together? Because some of these are, are really interesting, but also quite vague.
Well, this, you may, this is a time to have a discussion about it. I'm not explaining it, it came out of your committees
I understand.
And the Planning Committee. But certainly time to ask questions, time to challenge, time to, you know, revamp if you need to.
That would be now?
To some, to, to, to a reasonable extent, and then it goes on to Finance, where there is more opportunity.
I think this is definitely a, one of the times he has to have part of that discussion.
Okay.
Is there, I mean, and it was probably why I was prompting a bit of the committee chairs to, if they wanted to say anything about what they had brought forward, or what was on this list through there, and was also trying to see if others had questions. It was really planning to put everything kind of on the board, and then for, I mean, up on the wall for the board to then take a look at and perhaps discuss a bit on prioritization. board to then take a look at, and perhaps discuss a bit on prioritization, without needing to come to any conclusions tonight, but, you know, questioning, having questions and comments, so that Keith would have some direction as well. Patrick?
I mean, I can speak to what curriculum has here, and I can say something that, you know, may be partially coherent, but, but the priorities here, we, I, I can't comfortably say, these are our priorities, 'cause we don't have dollars tied to this, and we don't know what the dollars are tied to us. These are more conceptual priorities than they are programmatic priorities. And for me to say, well, you know, I'm gonna fight for, you know, one of these things over any one of the others, I don't, you know, I can make an argument that some of these are really not gonna cost us any money, and that's gonna boost them up to the top, and some of them may be cost prohibitive. So I think it's, I think it's very difficult for us to make a financial case, or a case, a budgetary case for any of these right now, without, without having that, that, that information.
Is that something that the Finance, the administration was looking to do on some of these priorities, or how were you envisioning applying, applying, 'cause, you know, applying numbers as Patrick was asking about?
So this is such a different process for us, and I'm going through it for the first time, just like you are, so David might be able to help. But in, the program priorities are what you, the board, after listening to public input through the surveys, have determined as your lenses through which you're going to make decisions. And I think that ultimately, when the numbers are in front of you, those priorities will shift, and they'll have to shift, and Patrick is right, there are a couple of things on there that I think that we're gonna be able to manage to do by shifting resources or without adding money, and you'll be pleased to hear that. But the concept is that these are the things that you feel are most important within the district for us to be thinking about as all the needs of the district come forward. And again, the first budget draft, I do believe, David, right, I'm trying to bring money in that first budget draft on October 22, so you will see costs, or potential costs, you know, creativity could always shave more costs, but potential costs of the priorities that are on there, and where I see things fitting, for you to play around with.
Yeah, and I guess I go a step further, and that, like I said, these are, I don't even know if these qualify, in my mind, as programmatic priorities, and I think I used the word conceptual priorities before. These are all, you know, speaking for curriculum, these are good ideas that we think are important. However, you're then going to take those and interpret those in some sort of programmatic, and then budgetary, through some sort of programmatic and then budgetary lens, which may radically alter not just the, not just the budgetary side of it, but the programmatic side of it, may radically alter it. I mean, it, it may not, but, you know, so you may come up to us with some idea about differentiated instruction, and we're saying, no, 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 that's not what we meant at all.
Sure.
And then we're another two months down the line before you, we kind of have some sort of common language, and then we have to put money on it, and I just don't know how, how this is gonna work.
I think we'll have to learn together. It's not the best answer, but it is our first time through this process. And the situation you just described is not a whole lot different from when we got to December at this point, as opposed to October at this point. So we're two months ahead of the game.
Amen.
Now Liz, first.
Um, I didn't have a chance to speak to this at the ITC committee, because the meeting started a half an hour earlier, but I was, I appreciated the way you presented this memo with specific items and a budget amount, so I thought that was a great, that was a great help in getting us kind of, you know, three quarters of the way there. And there's this one item, well, there's two things, two comments I wanted to make at the meeting, but couldn't get there in time. One is the additional janitorial staff, I'm wondering if our contract allows us, and if we've ever looked into a program with Champlain Vocational Services, so that we can, you know, support a vote ed program that I believe, I don't know if it's a division of Howard, but they, or if they've spun it off, but it's a job training program for people with mental disabilities. And you can contract for cleaning services, so that's one question that would, I think, be more cost effective, and, you know, maybe work if we only need additional help certain times a day. I understand the square feet issue, but I just feel like we're in a, a place that we may not be able to meet that standard. And then the second thing is, from the community survey, the one thing that really struck, struck out for me was the number of comments about the one-to-one technology program, and there was a very, I thought, helpful suggestion, that was very concrete about trying to go, try, I, let me just say that I feel like the one-to-one technology program is not sustainable, I feel like it's too rich for our district, and that the suggestion I saw that would allow us to meet some of those goals is the idea of a computer lab, that would be, have flexible hours, and, you know, I'd like the district, the administration to look into that as an alternative, so that it would function like a library, it could be open on the weekends, it would have printers, and it would be a place where students could get access to internet technology, because I'm just really, and that, I just thought it was a great suggestion in the survey, and I'm really concerned about, you know, in the next two fiscal years, we're gonna be absorbing $800,000 of cost, and I just don't see it as a sustainable program. So if not this year, then, you know, if we're coming off of this grant money, and we have to absorb the cost, I'm very worried about that as an ongoing budget item.
Can I speak to this, 'cause I think this pulls out as an example of exactly what it was that I was saying. So curriculum said, we wanna look at value and outcomes, all right? Now you've come with a very specific idea, which may be a great idea, but I don't feel like, at least speaking for curriculum, that we're ready to endorse any idea at this point. We wanna see, you know, let's, I wanna see some hard data that says, what is the value of the one-to-one? What are the outcomes that are, that we're seeing from then? And then, once we get that information, think about different options that either, you know, to fully fund it, or to, or to cut back, or think of alternate ways of funding it. And I, I've said, I think I've made my, my piece, so.
One question I might ask on that, with all this program, and maybe this is more rhetorical, I think with a program like that, whether it's one-to-one, or if it is academies, for example, the timeframe in which we evaluate. So, you know, I would also kind of ask that question generally about, when you mentioned looking at value of outcomes, in particular for the one-to-one.
I think, yeah, I mean, I also wanna point out, you know, the one-to-one comes up here twice, it comes up in the curriculum goals, and it also comes up in the ITC goals.
I would actually say that we had basically, it should be pulled down to curriculum, which is where we had talked about, and it has moved, you know, from being a, from into curriculum, yeah.
Okay, but I think it was, you know, my sense is, out of ITC, the idea was, let's fund it, but out of curriculum, the idea was, well, maybe we put the money there, but let's shift what we're using the money for a little bit, and let's make sure that we get some good data to ensure that, that's really affecting outcomes for kids in a positive way. So it's just, it's, I think maybe it's a slightly different cut on it, so I wanted to point that out. And then I also wanted to point out that actually there are diversity and equity, and curriculum both put differentiated, differentiated instruction as a professional development goal, which I think is awesome.
Isn't that great?
Yeah, so I mean, in terms of deciding what's important, that came from two places. So, you know, I wonder if we both were thinking the same thing when we wrote that down or not, that would be interesting. So I just wanna make those two comments. And then, the other thing is, I think in terms of curriculum, I would just wanna clarify a little bit, so that we make sure that what is on the sheet reflects a little bit more of what we were thinking, because I think as the notes got taken, it got a little too shorthand, so I mean, tell me if you think I'm wrong about this, but, so for instance, number two, differentiated instruction as professional development goal, then it says, one, diversity, two, equity, I'm not sure that explains anything. We were talking about differentiated, differentiated instruction, and we talked about it as it supports our goal of diversity and equity, not necessarily that we wanna do instruction around diversity or equity, so I wanna make sure that that is clear, that the note, that that was on there really because we thought that we want a school where the curriculum and the teachers and the way they teach is reaching all different students, so including the high achievers, including kids for whom English is not their first language, including kids with disabilities, including kids with different cultures. So that's, that's what's behind that, and I don't think it's quite reflected in the words. And then the first one there, curriculum, to redefine special education services, I think this is one of the things that was very high priority for the curriculum committee, but one that we thought didn't necessarily have to have any money attached to it, because we heard from Dylan that he had a plan to basically use the same resources and do some really great changes. So again, I'd wanna point that out, I know we're not putting money onto it, but I think it's a little more complex than the one, two, three things, we're not just talking about a multi-tiered system of support, we're not just talking about inclusion, we're not just talking about smarter use of resources. We're actually talking about going forward with his very complex multifaceted plan, that has those elements, but also has other things in it, and it was like a vote of support for his plan. So I don't, also wanna make sure that that's included, that that's clear.
And to add one more thing, I, I heard, and I, and I believe, that, you know, under this, under curriculum, one, two, three, and four are all different sides of a very, you know, of, of a very similar, of a very similar goal, that we're trying to reach all students, and that's not shorthand for remediation, that's not shorthand for gifted education, it's really trying to meet all students and to go at those. That's what I think a scope and sequence does for a curriculum, that's what the differentiated instruction does, and that's what Dylan's plan for rethinking special education service delivery.
Liz?
Um, I didn't see this in any of the committee work, but just a suggestion that I heard from the community or constituent was around the sports, the athletic program, which is maybe a question or a suggestion, I don't really know, but the, the idea was for certain teams or sports activities to look at the ratio of people on the team, or on the, in the activity, compared to how many assistant coaches there are, and that there may be an opportunity to streamline the number of assistant coaches that are on sports teams or activities that have very small numbers. And I don't know if assistant coaches get paid, but this person felt like there may be too many assistant coaches or a need, or not, like, we could do without either one full coach or assistant coach, or something like that, but just create a standard, like, you know, teams that have nine students or less will not have two assistant coaches and a coach, or something like that. I don't know if that's a real scenario, but that's just hypothetical.
You know, I think it's getting probably a little more, you know, down a level perhaps, you know.
Well, I didn't see it, and it was a constituent who brought it up, so I don't know where else to bring it.
I think that's part of the advisory, the athletic.
Yeah, I mean, I understand it's an individual point, but as far as.
Where would be the best place to bring that comment?
I would bring that comment to, you know, as you're creating an athletics budget, I mean, to, as part of a potential vision, or something like that, to a, you know, to that, because I bet that's like saying, I don't think we need as many.
The board?
Well, I mean, what, let me ask a question, Liz.
I'm confused.
Also, if you had the question like, I think we have too many sixth grade teachers.
Right.
Or someone has made that comment, it should, it wouldn't, you know, it would be part of an overall athletic and co-curricular decision, but if we at the.
I didn't realize we made decisions about the athletic and co-curricular budget per se.
But I felt like that's what you just said to do.
Oh, I'm, I'm just saying, it's a suggestion that came to me. If you have a more appropriate place to bring it, please let me know. It just seemed like you were saying this wasn't an appropriate place.
I think, yeah, I, I kinda was, I felt like, I think it would be, maybe where Keith is suggesting, would be the athletic advisory committee potentially is where discussions like that.
And directing to me is also a good suggestion for me to look at.
Okay, is there a problem with bringing it up here? I mean, I don't go to those meetings, I could shoot you an email, it just occurred to me, I just find this a little strange. I mean, we've taken up more time talking about where to bring that comment than just noting the comment and moving on.
Okay, I would bring it directly then to, the comment is noted.
I'll just write an email.
Yeah.
May I?
Yeah, Miriam.
Um, I just wanted to make an observation, I mean, we spent a lot of time going out to the community and getting information, and we did, and it was great, and we got a lot of good information, and I, I just, I think that it, it might be valuable to just, if anyone has any suggestions, maybe, you know, Liz just brought one up that was very specific, but even just trends that one saw in the data. I mean, I would say that, that's something that I saw, was that for every person who said we should have technology, there was one who's the one-to-one, there was someone else who said, that's a waste of money. And I, you know, for me, the experience of, of standing and giving out the questionnaires and looking at them really brought home the diversity of the district for us, for me, and it also brought, brought back the challenge that we have, because for every, you know, it's hard, we can't go back to the public and say, oh, there was, clearly, we got this information from you, and you clearly wanna go in this direction. So I, I'm not 100% sure where I take this thinking, but I think we need to acknowledge that, that, you know, for example, this told us that one-to-one technology is kind of a hot item, we heard lots about it in the surveys, but there wasn't agreement about why. Same with foreign languages in the elementary schools or in the high schools, hot item, a lot of people had ideas about it, but they certainly ran the gamut. So I just wanted to know if anyone else had any comments or thoughts about that, sort of what kind of feedback we might wanna give to the community about the great information, because I would hate for the community just go from, to see these, because this is what we came down to, but it's not as rich as the data that we got, and some of the ideas like that Liz was bringing up, we're gonna lose those, even if some of them may be very specific, and they might be very good, and I can think of several. You know, and maybe we need to create some sort of plan for specific cool ideas that came up through this, that we might wanna bring to planning, another idea.
Okay, Bill, one of the, one of the discussions we had at planning is, we noticed that under the board priorities, obviously, this has been a, a big point of discussion over the course of the last six months, but co-curriculars and athletics don't show up on the priorities anywhere, partially 'cause we didn't know which committee was responsible for claiming that as a, as a priority. Does that fall in curriculum? Possibly, does that fall in diversity and equity? You could make a case for some parts of it, you could, does it fall in for, you know, I don't know, ITC, there could be, who knows? But I guess the point is that there, I'm using athletics and the co-curricular as an example, but there may have been other things too, that we just didn't know where, who, who, which committee had say over that. And I bring that up then, to, to ask Jeannie, when you bring your, the director's priorities, to make sure that we kind of, one, to ask for guidance, but two, to make sure that those are reflected in spots that you see holes that we should have been, we should have been stating.
Did you want, Jeannie, was that more rhetorical, or what?
It was rhetorical.
Okay. I, Miriam?
I mean, I don't know if it's appropriate to make a motion, but, you know, perhaps we would like to, I know we talked at Planning Committee about having something that would go out to the public that would sort of summarize the information that we got from them, as opposed to just saying, now we've got the information from everybody together, here it is, and, you know, perhaps I, we could make a motion or consider the idea that we do want something to come out, that is some sort of document that describes to the community the richness of the data we got, the challenges behind it, and maybe some key themes, so that they know that we listened, because we did, we spent a lot of time looking at this data and gathering it, so. Is this a time where I should make such a motion? Or should there be a little more discussion? Don't wanna hijack it.
What I would suggest, Miriam, if you feel like making a motion, to make it.
Okay. All right, so I'd like to make a motion, I'd like to make a motion that, and Ben, I know you're good at the words, so please help me. I'd like to make a motion that, that the, let's see, that a report be generated that summarizes the process of gathering data from the public, and the themes that were identified, and the next steps in our process. I'd like to, does that sound all right then? Someone read that back?
So what, you, you made a motion that, and it was left indefinite as to who, but a report should be generated that summarizes the process of collecting information from the public. the public, the themes we identified, and the next steps in the budget process?
Yeah, I get, I, I would put that out there with, anyone want to make a friendly amendment to make it a little bit more complete? And I did purposely not say who should write it, because I didn't know. I would think that it would come from the administration with the board approval, but...
There is a motion on the table. Is there a second for the motion? Patrick seconds the motion. There's the motion on the table, is that a report be generated that summarizes the collection, the information collection process, the themes identified, and the next steps in the budget process? Is there any debate on this? Liz.
I guess I feel like we have a lot of that already. I mean, it seems like David did a lot of work already, so I'm not sure, I'm concerned about asking administrative staff to do even more work on something we have. I mean, I don't know, I guess I felt like we have this summary of budget surveys from parents, summary of budget surveys from students, we have the survey analysis, we have the survey goal, and I, I mean, I understand the benefit of reflecting on it, maybe as an evaluative tool. I'm just not sure.
I, I think, I understand what you're saying, and I'm not looking at this like a big report, but rather to take, it's very difficult to, to just understand the list of things if you don't have a context for it. So even for us, you know, there's four different documents you need to go to, and then you need to understand why things came from different ways. So I wouldn't see it as a huge time commitment, but more just somebody pulling it together in a maybe one-page executive summary that describes it, that could be then put out, I think. So I, I wasn't suggesting a big report, because I am aware that a lot of work has gone into it.
Liz.
Yeah, I don't know, I feel like we got that. We got a memo explaining it.
I think we got it, but I don't think the public got it. And I, I think that, you know, we asked, we went out of our way to ask the public to take their time to go over this, to give us input, and in a sense, this is acknowledging that we really looked at it and we're telling them that. I don't think we need it, we've got plenty of information.
Kathy.
I was thinking Miriam was talking more about something that we could put on Front Porch Forum, that was sort of like a little narrative about the data we got and how it's not quantitative, but it's qualitative. And, you know, say some of the things that David said to us in our committees and put that out for public consumption.
I would agree, and I think public, the Front Porch Forum would be a great place, so would possibly a letter going home to students from schools, or would, however we disseminate information to the public.
Keith.
I was thinking it might be a good kind of like preface to the budget. Because the budget is supposed to reflect major themes and what we get, so basically it could be, it could go out, I mean, you could disseminate it through Front Porch Forum, but it should also be the preface to the budget, to see if what we received for information is sort of reflected in what we put together.
I agree that the public needs to hear much of this. I also caught, and I agree that it would be a great preface to the budget, and I think that it needs to be stated as, this was a first run. The N is not nearly representative of this district, but it was a first shot, and we're learning a lot from it, and we'll continue to learn from it, but I would hate to have it presented as sort of, this is how we're going to do it now, and wasn't it so successful in capturing everybody's goals? Because it captured some goals, but we by no means heard from enough people to feel like we're creating goals that are representative of this district uniformly.
Ben?
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not quite sure how I feel about this. I like the general idea, but I caution in terms of how that translates into community expectations, how the information's going to be taken in. It's not about acknowledging, but fully going to, because it is a piece of the process. You know, I also take in information from what I'm hearing in the grocery store from constituents and what we're hearing, you know, in other places, and we're not mapping all that out. It's all a part of the process. And if we are putting something out and particularly hanging a lantern on it as an item from which we're basing a lot of information, then any decisions that we make that may be opposite or not in line with that starts to beg a question of, well, why aren't you listening to us? But in fact, it's, it's, I just worry about putting this in a disproportionate size relative to other information we're taking in. And I think we have to be careful about that. Doesn't mean not to still do that, but I'm not quite sure how we, if, if a report is the way to go, is the way, maybe a little more along the way that Keith is talking about, and how we all build off that communication.
Greg, Patrick, and then Miriam.
If, if the goal of this is to say, okay, we listen to you folks, and 50 people want to increase sports, or extra curriculum, and 20 people want to have more foreign language things, I, I'm not certain I want to support that, because I really don't think that, like some people have said, that we have captured this data and that this is really represented, representative of what, what the taxpayers want to do. So I guess that being said, I'm very hesitant about taking this and put it forward and saying, this is what the public wants.
It's not my turn.
Patrick.
So, yeah, I'm going to let Miriam go and then ask to speak afterward.
No, that was not, I, I don't mean to come across that it's specific, 50 people want this and 50 people want that, but I think there were some clear themes that came out, like the issue of technology is a hot issue, like the issue of language is a hot issue. So to simply reflect to people that we heard from a lot, this is how many people responded to the survey. This many came through the website, this many came from here, we had some, some students that also gave us data, this is not a, you know, this is an unrepresented sample, but we just want you to know that these were some themes that came up, and the board will be using this going forward as we integrate other things, and our next date is on this date. So I was really just thinking it like that, because I think unfortunately, Ben, we've already opened that door by asking people to give us information to the survey we've set expectations. And I think, assuming that, that, you know, just, that giving them a piece of paper that says, hey, you did the survey, I, I, I think people's expectations are already struck, are already high. The person who wrote that great idea that Liz was talking about, or not great idea, you know, put it down there and has an expectation that someone was listening to it. So I, I, I hope people don't get too caught up in that we're going to, this is going to make it hard and we're going to be stuck on these. I really think it's a matter of respect, it's a matter of transparency, it's a matter of, of thinking about our communication with the community as a back-and-forth kind of thing, not just a one-way. So I, I would urge people to think about it, not as a big, huge document, but just as a way of saying thank you to the community that we want to keep this dialogue going and that we listen.
I would just like to ask, almost a rhetorical question to the board, if we go forward with this, you've described actually a lot of, if we're collecting the data and we're saying such things, this technology came out as a hot item, there is a lot of judgment in that, and what level of board input is going to be wanted into any type of report that is put out like this? Because I'm already hearing a fair amount of board input into what the report would be, but just a rhetorical comment.
Patrick.
Yeah, I, I, I agree in principle with what Miriam's doing, and I, and I think she, she's right. You can't say, have a survey and then just say, well, we're going to give you this 46-page concise, you know, go ahead and read through it, we trust us, we listen to it. That's, that's unsatisfying, as someone who participated in this, you don't know that your voice is being said. At the same time, I also hear Ben is saying that, you know, we have to, Greg maybe said it, I don't know at this point, that, you know, that we need to be careful in saying, just because a certain number of people, this rose high, doesn't mean that's going to be our priority. So what I, I guess what I would suggest is some sort of, I don't know how you do this conciliatory, that's someone else's problem, some sort of summary of the budget process, figuring, pointing out specifically where the survey fit in, what are some of the themes in the survey that we would have? This is imperfect, but one of the things that the curriculum committee did is they said, well, here are the things, and it wasn't, it wasn't done in any sort of a scientific manner, but we went through and said, oh, a lot of people are saying this, maybe a lot we defined as four, maybe a lot we defined as seven, but this is something that comes up again and again and again, and seems to fall within the purvey of, purview of, of curriculum. And so we said, these are, this is survey information that informs curriculum. Not that we're necessarily going to follow it, because who knows? It could have been five people on my street that got together and were really upset about one thing, so that doesn't make, make it, you know, valid in, in any sort of way for, for building a budget. But if there's a way to say, look, I'm, I'm babbling at this point, but I, I think it needs to be, I guess the short is, I think it needs to be part of a larger, short document explaining the entire process and where this, where the survey fits in.
Can I just reread the motion for the most part? Which was that the report would be generated that summarizes the, basically the information generated, the information gathering process, you know, the major themes that we uncovered and what the next steps are? I think that fits pretty closely to what you also just recapped there, right, Patrick?
I think so.
Yeah. Ben?
To make sure that I'm understanding like the spirit of what you're trying to get to. So is it the point of like, we're acknowledging to the people, the, the community, particularly those who participated, thank you, we got all this. We're looking at it, we're taking it in, it's all a piece of the decision-making process, and here's the process. So maybe it's not a report so much as like, well, we're talking about a specific, you know, one, two-page something that's written in relatively plain English, specifically targeted to, you know, the community and the folks that do that, incorporating, like you said, basically the nature of what you, what you had in there.
Can I ask a question, actually, just a quick point? If we were to pass a motion like this, do you feel like...
May I comment?
Yeah, this is what I'm, I'm asking you directly, but I'm asking you the question. Do you feel like, because I think actually it would be administrative to do this, would you be able?
Absolutely. In my opinion, what Miriam is asking for is our responsibility as a school district who went out to the community, asked for information, to write a press release saying, we got it, we heard you, and this is what's going to happen next. It's, it's what, if you look at our past surveys, we've written a press release after each one, we got it, this is what we asked you, this is what we heard, this is what's going to happen next. It's basically a press release. It can go on Front Porch Forum, it can go on the web, but it's an acknowledgement that that information came somewhere. Some examples of the kinds of, and I think David's broad-based pictures of the kinds of themes that were in it, very appropriate to comment on. I think, I think the motion is actually worded very well. Those are the three components that need to be in it. And absolutely, we can, we can and should, and whether you brought it up or not, probably would have gotten around to, write a press release on it, because we need to acknowledge the fact that we asked the community to participate, and they did. And we need to get back to them and, and say thank you, and this is what we're hearing. I think we'd be remiss not to. I, I don't think it's really complicated. I also won't do it tonight.
Liz.
Just to answer your rhetorical question, it would be important for me, I agree with the spirit of it, it would be important for me to identify how many responses we received and to make the statement that this is not a statistically representative sample of the community. And then to follow up with, in addition to this, there will be these dates for public comment, as well as ongoing regular finance and board meetings, and have that all be the total picture of opportunities for public comment.
David, what is that? Any other comment? If not, I guess I would annotate a vote on the motion. Should I just rephrase it, or reword it, or?
I think it's good.
Ben?
So at this point, are we needing a motion?
We already have a motion and a second, a second on the table.
Brian, I'm just asking the concept if we're still on discussion, are we actually needing a motion at this point, or was Jeannie's comments basically, I'm going to, I will do this thing?
Now we need a motion for it to stop her.
I'm fine with the motion, but I just don't know if we need one.
No, I would like to keep it as a motion, because I think this is slightly different than a, a press release. I think it can look sort of like a press release and not be too much longer than that, but I think we need to have, have it on record as this is part of our process, so it stays in the process for next year as we're looking at the process. So I would like to, to keep the motion on the table, if that's okay with people.
I guess I would annotate, I guess, then the vote on the motion, that, and may I add the words, the administration?
Yes.
The administration writes a report that summarizes the information gathering process we went through with the community, the major themes that came out, and the rest of the process that will, that will continue, the next steps in the process of the budget creation.
Yep.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? I would just like to ask if you have some things that you want to make sure that get included in this report, I would ask you to email Jeannie, and I guess I would ask sort of process, I would just suggest that if there's things that come up that are directly in conflict, I, I will probably reach back to the individuals who had something that was directly in conflict. Does that work?
Yes.
Aaron.
And just if we could see a copy of the report before it is sent?
I will say yes, but I will also, I would also remind board members that if that is being asked for, that there's a reasonable amount of time, such as, you know, a day or whatever, to make comment, and if you don't, then we are, we will be behind the board. Okay? That as well?
Okay.
Anything else related to the budget process? If not, I would move on to a discussion of the redistricting piece that we had at planning committee. The where redistricting stands in the, in the, at the city council right now, they have referred it to the charter change committee. The charter change committee will be tweaking this idea, not changing it necessarily, but they will bring back the actual motion or the actual needs to the city council in November, is my understanding. In fact, they will bring them back in November. I think it needs to be finalized by January to be on the ballot for March. The role here for the schools is that there is much language in the city charter that relates directly to how school board members are elected, how many school board members there are, and so on. They are all, all the language refers to seven wards and a number of things like that. So there is some discussion that we need to have about how would we transition to the eight-ward, the four precinct model that is out there. Additionally, we have, as a, as the school board commission, I have spoken with charter change in the council, their understanding is that they would like to hear us come back with a discussion of how do we want to constitute the board? We have the option certainly of saying we want the same. We have the option of saying we could have a, you know, different number of commissioners. We could have a different set of ward boundaries if we want to. I think the board, though, had made this decision a while back, that what we would do would be to accept the, we had not had a formal decision, but we had an agreement that we weren't going to get involved in drawing the border lines, but that we would probably just respond to the borders as they were presented, and then go with the makeup of the board. The discussion at planning committee was that we would probably work with, through the policy and advocacy committee, to set up a public hearing or two, that we would then come to a decision, and in the November timeframe, get back to charter change committee with what we would like to do, and then allow the city, probably the city attorneys and so forth, who write all the necessary charter changes, to create the language that would also go on the election in March. Does anyone have any further questions, concerns, or comments about that basic approach to coming up, basically reaching out to the public, but then us also making a recommendation to the charter change committee of what we would like to do as far as, I guess, you know, the big question probably is, how many commissioners should we have long-term? Keith?
So are you planning on having a hearing sometime?
I think that through policy and advocacy, my understanding is that, yes, they should be generating a hearing for late October, early November. The first time it will be on the charter change committee, agenda will be late October. So yes, I think we should, that was the idea, to have a public hearing or two.
Well, I've been thinking a lot about this since I'm, I don't have any, I don't have any conflict, because I'm probably in the new district, and so the students will, well, whatever. But I, it seems to me that we've talked about maybe reducing the number of board members. Eight sounds like a really good number to me. And I've also thought that three committees sounds really good, with, with planning, finance and ITC kind of combining, diversity and curriculum, they seem, they should, and then policy. And so that's where I've been thinking. I think that it would streamline, and we wouldn't have this issue about diversity, thinking the same thing as curriculum, they would be talking together and diversity would, sort of, I think diversity's done its strategic plan and done a lot of its work, it was set up for it, so it could be part of the, part of the curriculum agenda. So anyway, that's what I was, that's what I was thinking.
I think, I'm just going to quickly comment, Keith has made an important point, which is if we significantly changed the number of board members, would the... we significantly changed the number of board members with the key, we would have to make a significant look at the committee structure.
I wanted to suggest, you know, I think it makes sense for it to go to policy, but there's only three of us on the policy committee. Kathy comes sometimes, but that's a small group of us to be generating information in the short timeframe. So I guess I wonder if it might make sense to set up a committee of those of us that are interested in being on it, to meet once or twice and then come back to the full board. Maybe policy could be in charge of creating the hearings or running them or whatever. But I feel like Keith has some ideas, I have some ideas, and if we start at policy, we're going to be wasting time because we only have three of us with ideas, so just like to suggest that.
What I would actually, if that's what you're suggesting, what I might suggest is that you make a motion that we establish an ad hoc committee to, you know, to look into the issue of redistricting and come back to the board with a recommendation for what we take to the charter change committee.
I would so make that motion. Whatever you say.
Is there a second?
I will second that.
There's a second for that motion. Is there any further discussion of this? Ben.
How would the makeup of the committee be determined?
Ad hoc committees are appointed by the chair. And what I would, you know, I would, my view would be, I would encourage, I would ask who would like to be on it, I would not limit it to numbers, but I would ask for, and I would also hope that this committee would look to have some form of public hearing. So I guess the makeup, you know, would come here, but I would encourage as many who are interested to, and I would not limit it to a particular number. That would be my approach if this passes. Is there any other discussion on the particular motion to have an ad hoc committee handle this issue? Hearing none, I would ask for a vote on the establishment of an ad hoc committee to look into the issue of redistricting and provide a recommendation to the board. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The one other thing I would like to say is I think that with redistricting coming up, it has, ad hoc committees need to have a sunset, and there will be a natural sunset for this and that we need to have it, develop a timeline. I would then say if any, please, I'm going to ask for board members who are interested to please let me know in the next, ideally by tomorrow night. I would like to set the committee as soon as possible. And the last thing I would like to say is if I don't see good geographic representation from the board, I will reach out to, what I'm going to say, the three major parts of town. You know, I think we have center, we have south, we have north, and I will reach out to all three parts of town to make sure that we have some representation.
Because if not, he's going to redistrict you guys out of here.
Well, I think there's also, there is a citywide concern, I think that all of us as commissioners should recognize that. I know there's a lot of pressure in Ward Six for certain things, and I'm sure that in the rest of town there is as well. Okay.
Was there a first and second on that?
Yes, Miriam made the motion and Keith was the second.
Thank you. Just to throw a point of how it works, would there be, in an ad hoc committee, is there someone who's the chair of the ad hoc committee? Do you determine that or how does that happen?
Yeah, I think I appoint the chair as well. And so if you're interested in sharing it, let me know as well. And remember, this will be sunset pretty quickly, so it'll be, it'll be a little bit of a sprint. That is it, I think, coming out of planning.
Jeez. Did I say that out loud?
Well, no, but I heard it. Keith, finance committee.
Okay. I guess first item was the recommended priority for the fiscal thirteen, fiscal fifteen budget. We talked about what we've done in the past. We've talked about general fund expenditures, but they don't, that doesn't really relate to the tax increase. And the tax increase doesn't really relate to the general fund expenditure increase. And really, the way we really fund education in the state of Burlington now is on equalized pupil count. And the equalized pupil count consists of every student being given one, but some students get an additional, depending on the year, how much. If you are a child in poverty, you are, there's an additional percentage increase over the one. Or if you're an ELL student, there's a percentage increase over the one. And if you're a high school student, the assumption is that those students, those students cost more to educate. Then there's students who are, who are in preschool in Burlington and we work with them, we get a percentage, but not of the whole of one, we get somewhere around 0.5 or something depending on the year, okay? So when we get a, when we get a per pupil number, which we anticipate to be somewhere around 4,110.79, that is, that is what our funding for education is going to be for the, that will be based, that plus the amount that the, the base, the, what's it, the base education amount that's determined again by the legislature, that will give us our funding. So it seemed, in discussing all of this, it seemed that the most appropriate way for us to make a recommendation to the full board for a, kind of a target for what kind of increase we should have in our budget should be related to the per pupil, the equalized per pupil cost. And last year, it was, it was in the area of eight percent. And the year before that, it was 9.5. Kind of looked at that, plus we were looking at some, what we, what we were seeing in the survey as some ways we need to maybe increase. So we're thinking it's going to sugar off somewhere in the area of 6.9 percent. We don't know. Right now, what is that going to mean for tax rate? Well, we don't know. The legislature sets the rate, but what we do know, if we don't change anything, we go from what we spent this year to next year, we will already, we already have a 2.7 percent increase in tax.
So what did you say it was?
2.7 percent. So we, a lot of the decisions about our tax rate are always, are based upon legislative decisions. So we, and we decided that the general fund increase doesn't really relate to the tax rate. So what's the most reasonable way to look at it? Well, it seemed like it was the per equalized pupil cost to educate a student Burlington. And the last, over the last many years, we've been, we have been sometimes way below the state average, but we are catching up to the state average. So that seemed like something that we should look at as a recommendation from the finance committee to recommend as a target number, 6.9 percent on the per equalized pupil cost of education in Burlington.
Can I just ask you to, for some clarification?
Sure.
So are you saying that the per pupil equalized cost represents our base budget essentially? And then there's add-ons?
What it is, is they take that number, 4,110, and they divide it into the number that we're, the total amount of the budget, and that gives us that per equalized pupil cost.
Yeah, I know.
Yeah.
So there are different variables you can look at when you're building the budget, the tax rate, the percentage of increase that you're doing in the budget, there's a number. Per equalized pupil cost is the variable that compares us apples to apples across other districts. And so it is exactly what it says. The equalized pupils, equalized by the formula that Keith spoke about, divided by the, so the number of equalized pupils divided by the budget, and it's more complicated, but that's the basic formula, tells you what we're spending per equalized pupil, and that compares with what we're spending compared with other districts across. And it helps to compare apples to apples because we, you know, for example, grant monies that Burlington's eligible for and many schools are not, would vary just straight cost expenditures, et cetera. So it's a formula within the tax exchange funding formula.
And do we have a consistent number of equalized pupils each year?
It's been going on.
What's the number?
I don't know right now.
Well, I can give you that, I can give you that. This, we anticipate this year will be 41, 4110. Last year, it was 4,080.
But that's a dollar amount, right?
No, that's not, that's the equalized.
Oh, that's the 41.
I'm sorry.
We will know our equalized pupil count in December, so we're anticipating it.
That was the dollar. That was like something.
That's the number, see, that's the number.
That's the number.
Yeah, okay, we anticipate, okay. What was a per spending, what was a per pupil, per equalized pupils amount we spent last year?
Yeah.
13,321 dollars.
Okay. And then, sorry.
Okay. That was your fiscal, that's what we're currently spending in fiscal 14. And fiscal 13, which we just finished, which was, was 12,333 dollars.
And then these eight percent, nine and a half, 6.9, what are those percents of?
That is what the increase in the per equalized pupil expenditure was.
Expenditure from one year to the next. So the 6.9 is a projected?
Right, is a target. In other words, when you see her budget, you decide whether it's too much or usually you say it's not enough. I'm sorry, boards say that, no, boards. But when we bring in a budget, you're going to, that's the target we're trying to look for.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Liz, I'm sorry, Karen.
How did, why 6.9 as opposed to 6.4 or 7.3 or?
We kind of.
Did you just say that and I was not listening?
No. We looked at what we know some of our costs are.
I know you said it would be two point something if we kept it, but then you sort of put the four percent.
Two point seven percent.
I'm wondering, is that like an average? Is that like?
Well, that doesn't, we have a, we have compensation that.
We just best.
If we did not increase, if we did not, we have compensation. And if we keep, kept it the same, we'd basically have to lay out about 20 teachers.
So that 6.9 includes the cost?
Compensation and the deficit that we incurred in fiscal 13.
Okay.
And additional monies that we saw and that we kind of projected from what you wrote, you gave us, and what we saw in the, you know, from our reading of the survey.
But it was sort of just a number?
Yeah, just like.
Best guess.
Well, but it's.
But it's a work, it's a working, it's a number to work from.
Patrick? But it's a number to work from, it's not a number that's based on, these are specific programs that we want to add.
Right.
I think, is that your kind of, can I, I just, from a, I see the logic behind this. I think we need to be extremely transparent with the, with the community though as to, because honestly, the community doesn't care about the percentage increase of per equalized pupil, they want to know what's the increase to their tax bill.
Yeah, and you will know that.
I understand that you know that, but we're having one discussion here that, that we all understand at some level, maybe not at a deep level, we all understand at some level. I'm guessing the community wants to know how much is the budget going to be increased and how much are my taxes going to be increased, and that's what they're going to make the decision on, not on per pupilized spending. So I just, I just think we need to be very, very transparent because we have had some tough budget years. One other question I had, what relates to the equalized pupil spending. Is that the number that gets used for such things as the two-vote level, which I think is going away actually, or has been used for other items like that? Is that the particular?
Since, since we've never had to worry about that, I don't know.
Yeah, the threshold's pretty high.
Yeah, I didn't know if the thresholds were based on that particular number. It was one of the questions because it is another, it's not necessarily, it can be another aspect that we want to make sure we look at.
Two vote sensitive, the last little station, but it is on that number.
Yeah, it was on, yeah, I guess that's kind of what I want to highlight was, this is a number that gets used for other things within the state. So, well, we may be talking about it internally, Patrick, I think also has a strong point, we have to communicate these other pieces.
But remember, we won't necessarily know the tax rate increase when they vote, they, we don't know, the legislature sets that afterwards. We only estimate it what we think it might be. So we need to be very clear about that. I think we've tried to be very clear about that.
Any other questions for Keith? I think one thing we discussed at planning was how these two pieces fit together, was the programmatic side and the finance side, we're making the two pieces, and then it's also coming together in the 22. Miriam.
Does the board vote on whether we like this 6.9 percent? Or does that just stay with finance and we use it in the process?
What I'm going to say is this is what finance is going to work with, the board, it's not come to the board yet, it will be something that, you know, at some point we can say, wait a minute, we're not in the right place.
You'll get the vote on the final budget.
Yes, in the long run, yes. At this point during the building process, it's still working within finance.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Keith?
Yes. Okay, the, we're currently under, our fiscal 13 budget is now being audited. It's being audited by the auditor that we hired compared to going to the city. And it is at a, currently at a lot less expense than the city has charged us in the past. Okay. Our budget, we had an increase in, in income of about 1.5 million in revenues that we did not anticipate, and we had an increase in expenditures of 2.8. So when it came down to, we are going to show, the auditor will be checking on this, that about a 2.28 million dollar deficit. And the reason why is it's all on the finance committee board docs, all the specifics, everything over $100,000.
Wasn't that quite different? I thought we were thinking about like a 300,000 one, just.
I know, we went from seven to three and yeah, and now we just had a, this is the truing up of the numbers and late numbers coming in, if they thought they, we got the numbers from the city that we did not know we were going to get and things like that. And not, I'm not blaming any particular situation, but we're truing up numbers and really trying to get hold of, manage this budget.
One question that I had, Keith, was is there any idea, I know this, when we end up with the budget deficit, one question I always have is, how much of this deficit do we think is something structural that would continue on into the next year? Because we then would not probably have considered it during building the fiscal 14 budget? And how much of it might have been, you know, things such as a larger number of people perhaps taking, retiring and gold and, you know, and retirement payments?
There are some items that we will not incur again, the house, the building.
Right.
And the retirement. But for the most part, right, that, that might be a third of it. I don't know.
Okay. Okay, because one concern then, I guess I have, is it kind of means that we probably are already going to be running deficit for the next year if it's something that's structural.
I hope, we're hoping not.
I understand, but if it's structural, it could well be already at that position.
Oh, for 14?
For 14, yes.
Yes, I think we, I, working really hard to make sure we don't.
Okay.
We've added some co-curricular and athletic funding, and we've got funding for the loss of federal funds, so, through sequestration, so I don't know. But one of the things that we have put in place is a long list of management activities that David and, David and Karen will be taking care of for us. So we have, we've never had that before.
Okay.
So over, really, the job of the finance committee is oversight, and we've really requested that they get some really better plans in place for oversight, some procedures in place for oversight.
Okay. Other questions at this point? Policy.
So is that, is that number, that 1.2 number, is that out in public now?
Yes, it's on board docs.
It's on board docs.
So our, the actual deficit is 1,288,840.
Okay, thank you.
I would, you know, the finance committee agenda from the 23rd, is that right? 24th, did have a couple documents.
Yeah, it's all over there. And what he has done is he's really explained the major, major sources of revenues that we didn't anticipate and the major expenditures that are over 50,000 or more that we had, which will get us what you're talking about.
Right.
Policy, I know that Linda sent out a report, it was going to be, you know, I Policy. I know that Linda sent out a report. It was going to be, you know, I.
Yeah, she asked, she asked me to do it.
Maryam, I think you were.
I said a couple of things. So, let's see. Jeanie said that the, the policies are now searchable on board docs, which is great.
No, I'm sorry.
Soon they will be?
Policies will be searchable.
Will be.
Now, not currently, because they're on the old website, which doesn't, which board docs does not pull up. Minutes are searchable on board docs now.
But, but the, soon the policies will be, which is something that, that's good. It hasn't been the case before. The policy, now, the committee had been sort of looking through the policies and trying to figure out what to do about them. And after looking at how sort of piecemeal it is, we had a discussion about whether it might be better to get some other options about how we might handle the policies. So on October fifteenth at seven P M., Nicole Mace from the Vermont School Board Association is coming to speak with us. She's doing a free consultation, and she's just gonna tell us about how other boards manage their policies and give us some options about what she might be able to offer us. So everyone's invited to come. We'd like the more the merrier. So that is October fifteenth at seven. And then the last thing is, just there's been some good advocacy things going on. Jean has been meeting up in the north end, and then starting this Sunday, we're gonna have a meeting in the south end Sunday morning with Jean. I think Alan's coming. Patrick and I are gonna be there, and hopefully we'll get some people to just open up and talk about whatever's on people's minds. And I think that's it.
Okay. Any other questions? Bernie, you have a few motions. Infrastructure.
Yes. Yeah, we had a good meeting, two hours and twenty minutes, but I will endeavor to make my report of a shorter duration. Yeah, I'll just take the motions as they come into the minutes. We had a, started out just with a discussion on budget for I T C and property services. And it's actually fairly well laid out from a memo from Paul to Jeanie, which is part of the agenda for the meeting. So that, it gives some background into some of our budget priorities for the, for next budget year. We had an update on the five-year plan for facilities. And Paul and Mark Irish have been working diligently on laying out priorities for the entire district over the next several years. And it's, it's set by priority, and then also it, it gives building by building, too. We had some discussion about our two million dollars, that capital bonding we have each year. And, and being transparent about the fact that that adds, with the current bonding interest, adds about ninety or a hundred thousand dollars a year to the budget. And that's added each year, so I think we maybe have to get that made a bit clearer as to the impact that has on the budget. And then we had discussion about, you know, when, when and if we can actually stop taking that two million dollars. And that led to some discussion about increasing the deferred maintenance percentage every year. And, and also the, the big, bigger projects that we're looking to bond. We'll have to talk a little bit about enrollment projections. And actually, we've contracted a, a organization, New England School Development Council, to take a little more in-depth look at our potential future school populations. And Paul had done a, a quick study, just looking at past data, just from our own records. And came conclusion, we could easily expect additional thirty-four children a year for the next coming years, from K through five. Which means, you know, the class, classroom and a half at least each year. But hopefully that report will be in November, or if not, in, certainly hopefully by December, to help us in our, our budgeting. St. Joseph's School, we had an update from Paul and Mark, looking at fine tuning some of the numbers. And we've actually asked them to go back and, and try to true them up with, with the original idea that the, what we could do for the money that we, we're gonna get potentially from our real estate transactions. Think. Let's wear footage, and talk about that. So I think that comes to the first motion, and this is in regards to St. Joseph's School. A motion to recommend an option to purchase for the total of two million dollars from the Co-Cathedral of St. Joseph of Burlington with regard to the purchase of the St. Joseph's School within a year. With a deposit of twenty thousand dollars that is fully refundable if the transaction does not come through. Execution of said option to purchase being subject to the prior approval of the Burlington City Council.
Do a second. Keith? Did you wanna speak a little bit to her?
I, yeah, I, you know, I think this sort of, you know, things have been dragging a bit with our transactions with, with U V M. And, and so this was a request, I think actually came from the diocese. And it, it's just sort of a, a good faith after our part to show that we're certainly serious about buying the property. And, and depending on what happens with the negotiations, we'll, we'll hopefully assure that.
Okay, and I, I'm sorry, I don't have it in front of me, but was this the correct language for?
This was the latest language, yeah.
Okay.
And it, it was.
Revised by our attorneys.
Yeah.
And I just wanna clarify a couple things, 'cause I had actually not, when I heard the debate at I T C, had not understood a couple things. First off, this is, it did put the fixed price on it.
Yes.
Which is a two million dollars.
Yes.
And it is really a deposit that's fully refundable if the transaction does not go through.
Yes.
But goes against the purchase price if it does go through.
That's right. That's right.
Okay, thanks. So at this point, I mean, I think kind of also we've kind of clarified, you know, the option doesn't exist. We're agreeing to go into this agreement, and it will have to be written. That was, this is something we will have to write and get signed by both parties at some point.
Yeah, it's a motion to.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
To, to, yeah.
Any further discussion on this? Rebecca.
I'm a little bit concerned about how big this is becoming and how much, how big the numbers are getting, particularly on the heels of looking at, looking to see the needs of B H S. At this point, there's a lot of potential for what St. Joseph's could be. And that's a lot of money for, for potential, rather than really being able to hang our hat on something that is a clear need. Particularly given the, the location, certainly that's a benefit for school ownership. But it's, maybe memory serves me wrong, but I seem to recall that this was initially much less cost when it was presented way back when. That this was not intended to be an extra five million dollars, that this was intended to be more of a revenue neutral exchange. And it's feeling really big, so I'm a little hesitant to continue to move forward with this, quite honestly.
Keith, did you wanna speak to that?
I think it's important to know that, you know, even we just, we just, we, we, we had a reconstruction on Sustainability Academy.
In our five-year plan, we have a significant number, not near five million. Maintenance on buildings is constant. That number is sort of over the years, it's not necessarily has to be done right now. And the idea, we've never said that it would be a perfect building when we got it. And we would put, we would put the one point six into it, and we'd have to live with that for a while, 'cause we do have a major project coming up right here. With the numbers of students that we're predict, we're, that, you, things have changed since even this, this real estate proposal was given to us in June. The numbers of students that seem to be increasing in our district, this is gonna give us some additional space to help and help in that situation. And there, I think, as you go out to the community, there's gonna be a lot of interest in maybe, maybe it might be something other than the, you know, the I A. It might be I A plus middle school, you know, might be, you know, there's a, there's a lot of opportunities here if it, if it's, if the community agrees to have it as a school. And I think that, that, that's gonna be very important for the, for the I A community to really discuss. But with, with the increase in students coming along, we have, we have some significant costs with that. That's, that's, if we don't do it here, we do it at, where? More new construction.
Can I just ask a clarifying question at the bottom of that? The memo essentially with the list of, of renovations, it says estimated new construction at a dollar figure. Does that mean new construction on brand-new land as compared to St. Joseph's, or is that about? I mean, I'm thinking, I mean, I'm, I'm sort of pulling this out of my head, so forgive me.
It's a good question.
I wonder, for example, Hunt has an enormous amount of space that can be built upon. Champlain has an enormous amount of extra space that can go up. And I just wonder, I totally hear what you're saying, Keith. We have growing numbers, absolutely. And my question is, is St. Joseph's really gonna be enough? And does it make sense for that to be our choice, rather than to go north or south in the city and look at space that we could grow?
Yeah, do you wanna speak with the memo?
That's why we're, we're sort of trying to look, analyzing all our space throughout the district to see what our capacity is. It, building, I mean, and that's something we'll look at. We talked, just threw out some ideas in I T C about, you know, do we add on Champlain? Or do we build something at Hunt? But, but a lot of it is just the timing. I mean, our, our needs are coming up in the next couple of years. And with the idea of doing the project here and potentially a pretty big project at Edmunds, the timing of doing another, which should be a major project, it's, it's not good. And. And again, it's, it's, the whole idea about buying St. Joseph's is based on growth and, and how quick it's happening.
Maryam, and then Liz.
I wanna come back to the motion on the table, and my question is, is that, we would be voting to ask for a deposit that would be fully refundable? And my question is, is that feasible? I mean, why would St. Joseph's wanna do that? I think initially when I T C talked about it, it was gonna be fully refundable, except in certain circumstances. So my question is, are we asking for something impossible? And if we are asking for something impossible, are we then gonna go down a slippery slope? Because they'll offer us something, but it's not gonna be fully refundable. So I, I wonder if anyone has thoughts on that.
I, I, I mean, I.
Well, again, it's, it's, it's basically a motion to enter into a conversation with them about this option. And, and they could, they could turn this down, and then potentially we'd have to come back to I T C and the board.
Liz.
I can offer some clarifications on that, and then I'd like to have the floor, my other comment. I think just as a real estate instrument, an option is for the purpose of holding the property to prevent the owner from going and entering into conversations with other parties. The motion to have the option deposit be fully refundable was very intentional, so that we wouldn't be risking any money. So the administration wouldn't be able to create terms and conditions that don't comply with that. So that was the intent very clearly. We did talk about initially an option, a more traditional option would be that it's more risky. And that it might not be fully refundable. But for many of the reasons that, you know, Becca brought up and Keith raised and other people raised, the fully refundable was pretty critical to at least my support of it. And so the diocese may reject that. We don't know yet. But that was the direction that the administration got, was to only enter into it under those terms and conditions. So I think that's pretty clear. You know, if they were to come back with something other than that, it would mean that, you know, they had done something that violated the motion in terms of that option money.
You continue.
Thank you. So as a member of the I T C committee, I just wanna say that personally, I don't think this is the time to advocate for or against St. Joseph's. I think, and it, and you can see in the minutes of the I T C committee, we talked about the fact that we do have space needs. And there was a request made to Paul and the other staff that there be an analysis of alternative scenarios, such as, you know, expanding existing buildings and property and what that would look like, what that would cost. If we have a rough estimate of up to seven million dollars right now on the table, what could we buy for seven million dollars as an alternative scenario to meet our space needs? So that was a request, and I believe they're coming back to the I T C committee with that information at November fifth. So that's in the minutes of the I T C committee. So personally, my support for this was that it's an opportunity to explore, not foreclose this opportunity yet until we have, you know, the scenarios on the table that we need to evaluate it better. So the option is a tool to hold it off the market while we explore it. And, you know, staff puts together what it would take to achieve some of the same goals by not purchasing it and not entering into real estate transactions and using what we have. We also talked about, I don't know if this made it into the minutes, but we also talked about, you know, a kind of a vision beyond that of what it would mean to actually, you know, think outside the box, like having one central middle school in the center of the city. And then, you know, there's lots of different opportunities to talk about, you know, different ways of meeting our needs. But this just holds the property off the market risk-free until that exploration, that conversation happens. Again, the diocese might come back and say no, and, you know, then we're kind of back to square one.
Any further discussion on the motion for the option, which I, we read? Motion to recommend an option to purchase for a total of two million dollars from the Co-Cathedral of St. Joseph of Burlington with regard to the purchase of St. Joseph's School within a year, with the deposit of twenty thousand dollars that is fully refundable if the transaction does not come through. Execution of said option to purchase being subject to the prior approval of the Burlington City Council. All in favor of this option, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, so this motion carries.
Yeah, David, excited, David Epstein, who is from TruX Colons Architects, who is working on the B H S project and just helping Amy and the staff and everybody involved in, in bringing along this project. And, and they're working on an education plan now. So David came in and just sort of brought us up to date. He had a potential schedule for moving ahead. And, and I should go back, the, the month prior in the minutes, there's a, a very good letter that David wrote to, to Amy and Terry Bailey, just setting out the steps for going through a large project like this. And it's, it's very helpful to people to look ahead to see what we've got coming up. And one of the questions was, since we potentially have the money in the next year's budget for proceeding with this, this project, sort of how much we should, we should be thinking about putting in? David mentioned somewhere between a hundred and fifty thousand and two hundred thousand dollars depending on how many, what condition the information is about the current school, both in drawings and, and various reports and that sort of thing. Do we need surveys? So that, that's something we're, we're still working on as far as an exact amount to put in the budget for, for deciding. We also had a discussion about, then with the, with the schedule, David had laid out a schedule that we would, for going bond. a schedule that we would, for going bond, for a bond build next November election week. And there was some discussion about, it didn't actually come up the month before, about this maybe a bit too interjected as far as what we have to get done over a certain amount of time. And getting public input, possibly looking at a capital campaign. And so we, we didn't, we didn't set on a final schedule, I mean, yet. But towards that, there was another motion that was made, and that was to recommend moving forward with the planning and design process for the redevelopment of Burlington High School as a budget priority of I T C.
So that is a motion?
That is a motion.
Is there a second? Keith, did you want to speak to this a little bit or?
You know, Amy was very concerned about, we're going to lose momentum. And that, and that's been my concern too. And so I, I think this was as a gesture to say, we need to put money in the budget for next year and just to, to continue the process.
And by, as I saw this motion, I was kind of questioning, so you're basically saying with what we put on paper, we had during the budget process for planning, that you're asking the board in effect to basically state that this is one of the highest priorities? Or put it as a high, very high priority? And what was the amount that we had?
Well, David threw out $200,000 and, and will be that. And also, which I'll talk about next after this motion, is what else we made money for as far as design services. And I'm also, I did some home calls this week to see sort of what information we have and what other additional information we may have to pay to get in order to, to do this, the design work. This primarily involves the site maintenance services. So yeah, yeah, I would, again, at $200,000, I think would be, but again, with the other pressures on the budget, we'll be very careful about what we ask for.
Is there any other questions, comments, debate on this? So the motion on the floor is to move forward the planning and design process as a priority, oh, I'm sorry, for the redevelopment of Burlington High School as a budget priority of I T C. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'm still trying to decide if I have a comment. Hold on just a second.
Okay.
I'm unclear as to why this is a motion. Can't they set their budget priorities?
I, my question, I guess, and I would, maybe, maybe we can re-ask. My question was actually, are you, I was, are you asking the board to put this basically on the top of the priority list? Which I understood Bernie to say yes to. I've seen a lot of money and go into high schools, a lot of money go into high schools and their beautiful buildings without a whole lot of change in teaching. So I mean, I, this is the comment I made in planning the other day, the resources and student outcomes aren't tied to each other. So I've just, I mean, if we're, we're putting it as a priority, but I guess at this point we're just saying this is a priority, but we're not, are we, are we giving an actual number that's going to go in the budget toward moving this process forward of $200,000 for next year? I, I, that's what I'm, I'm clear on.
I, I don't think we can set a number. I mean, we could, I guess, put a limit to it. It's just that we don't quite know yet what, what scope of work would be. I mean, what would be required. The other thing is, is we're also thinking about, at the same time, a, a project at Edmonds. Because to pull that, the work at Edmonds absorbs all our, our capital, bonding capacity, and a lot of deferred maintenance for the next five years just to sort of inch that building along to what it really needs to be. And so that was the other thing. Do we put, do we block it together? Edmonds B H S project. And then how does that affect this? And that's what we're still working on.
Keith and then Liz.
Well, as I recall it, I T C, basically, the principle of the high school came and, you know, several boards have supported that we need to transition, need to make transformation of our high school. That's why we went out for the Nellie May grant and that to change things, the teaching especially. And, but we also need to change, need to make renovations and do things for this building for energy efficiency, for especially accessibility and security and then spaces for new, well, for the, for the ways that Nellie May partners are talking about, we should be teaching our students. So this was a way for this board to say, yes, we need to, we need to support. I don't know if it's a, it's a priority of I T, I think it should be a priority of the board and myself, but that we do support this, that we still go out, going out for renovation of Burlington High School. You know, opening in 2020, whatever. But the, the idea is that this, this school has not been renovated, has not really had any major renovation and it's 60 years, 60 years old. No, I'm sorry, 50 years old, 1963. Anyway, the, so that, and I guess basically, the other thing is that they are going, not going to get accredited by that New England Association if we don't do something at this high school. And so she kind of needed, she needed us to get moving on, supporting this and also is a way to help with the accreditation for the high school.
Bernie, can I? Did you want to respond directly? Otherwise I was going to have to, Liz. Liz, watchings.
Okay. Yeah, I just wanted to try and help provide a little more context for this. So as I understand it, the conversation about the high school, high school's repair and maintenance needs and then beyond has been kind of on the table for, I mean, I have an 18-year-old and I know that there were people talking about this 15 years ago. In the meantime, I think the district has, you know, put in, invested, and the city has invested huge amounts of dollars in a number of other schools, as we know, elementary schools and Edmonds for a number of reasons. And with the high school, I think it has, you know, become, taken a backseat because it is, it's rather overwhelming to think about it. But there's a combination of immediate needs driving the conversation, like accessibility and energy efficiency. But also now we do have curriculum changes on the horizon and there is a broader conversation about approaches to learning that connect directly to the physical ability of the school to enhance that, the same way that the Sustainability Academy went through some significant redevelopment in order to connect to its curriculum. So part of the discussion, I think, along that I've tried to keep alive is that, you know, the district has a very strong approach to doing this in partnership with Partnership for Change so that if there is, if there are changes to be made, they are made as part of the curriculum changes and that they, you know, directly tie together. So that's just an important piece. But overall, I think the, the accreditation and the accessibility issues are, are pretty urgent and the, the need for the building to foster and enhance like the learning process better, as I think we've seen, has been done at Sustainability Academy in particular.
Bernie?
Patrick, I agree with you. There's been some, some Taj Mahal's built. And, and I see a lot of them because it comes through all our publications.
Sure.
And, and I, I think, you know, it is, as we move ahead with this, we're, we're going to have to be very, very disciplined as far as what we do here. I mean, I, the other three schools we've done so far, I think we've done an excellent job because there's, even though this, we've spent $12 million, it's fairly minimal work as far as what we did there. It was really just increasing, you know, energy efficiency and, and just making better learning environments. But I, I thought they were very well-paired out projects and I would hope that that follows suit in, on the project here.
So I guess my, my question is that, you know, great, I'm, I'm much more swayed about comments about accessibility, less so about the accreditation because I think sometimes that's a different discussion to have. But it's the people that accredit, accredit, give accreditation, also have vested interest in making sure that, you know, we're doing renovation because those are the people that would be doing the renovations. Your plumber accrediting how, what sort of shape your plumbing in your house is in, they have vested interests. But so, but the, the question of the curriculum. So until we articulate what the curriculum goal is, the curricular goals are, and then specifically how the renovations are going to, to, to work to meet towards those goals, I, I have, I have some concerns. I mean, we're taking teaching as a black box, that we just build this and that better teaching will take place. But we, we haven't been able to articulate what it is that's going to go on in those classrooms and then how the renovation is going to be able to enhance what that thing is that's going on. I'm, I don't know if I'm going to vote in favor or I'm going to abstain. I'm not going to block it at this point and vote against it at this point because I think it's a discussion and I'm convinced that it's worth going forward. But I go forward very, very, very cautiously on this. And I feel like talking about St. Joe's becoming a bigger and bigger thing, this could, this could balloon out of control if we're not really careful moving forward, et cetera.
Any other comments on the motion? And I guess if not, I was going to ask to read back, but.
I need to re, the motion I read from the minutes was not complete. So I need to reread the motion.
Okay.
I guess, or I guess I need to.
Yeah, please.
I guess we need to take back the other motion? How's this one? Well, let me read it and we'll see if what if. Motion to recommend moving forward with the planning and design process for the redevelopment of Burlington High School as a budget priority of I T C and authorize the administration to move forward with planning by seeking requests for proposals. So I guess that, that request for proposals is what's changed. We're actually going to move forward in hiring a design team for the initial phases of the project.
Erin.
Just a quick comment. So when we, when, when we're talking about the redevelopment of Burlington High School, was it being sold to us as something that was going to improve learning or something that was going to strictly improve the building? Because there aren't wheelchair ramps, there are not. So I guess just trying to figure out where Patrick's coming from in the sense that this is really just a structural thing, that we need improvements here at the school and not necessarily about trying to, you know, change the way Burlington's teach, the high school's teaching based on the building. Am I right? Or is, or is it a, is it a mixture of both?
It'll be a mixture of both. I mean, the, what happens physically with the new plan will come out of the education plan, which is derived from goals and that sort of thing. And then from that, there's programming done and, you know, what, what is going to happen in the spaces and how big those spaces need to be, where they need to be and who they need to be next to. And, and that's, that's all part of the process. And the letter from TruX Colons from the September meeting really does, again, I think, an excellent job in spelling out that process.
Can I just ask a clarifying question related to the new motion? Even if the administration is asking for putting out an R F P for this, the budget effect would still be not in this fiscal, I mean, we're not asking for additional spending in this particular.
No, no, no.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify.
And we talked about that, about moving forward now, but nobody gets paid till July. And even moving forward now, and if the budget goes down, maybe the money will away. So.
I got you. Okay, so I see. I just want to make sure that I, it sounded like we were moving a little bit faster. I just want to make the bu, sure the budget wasn't moving faster.
Yeah, and in school projects, this always happens. You always have to do, the design team always has to do a lot of work without getting paid for a very long time.
Any further discussion of the motion? Would you, can you just read it back again for us?
Motion to recommend moving forward with the planning and design process for the redevelopment of Burlington High School as a budget priority of I T C and authorize the administration to move forward with planning by seeking requests for proposals.
Yes. All in favor of this motion? Say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. And I guess I would just note, something I had just came to me now, I think that with this, I've not heard any opposition to the, any of the motions that we passed this evening. So I would just, in the minute, minutes, if it could reflect after motions that student members voted in support, because I haven't heard any opposition. You are, we are, we recommend, we, we do note, and I, and maybe you don't want this, but we do note your vote in the minutes, although it's not part of the tally.
So would you just like us to speak up if we oppose the motion?
Yes, that would be the thing to do.
Aye.
Sorry, I just, I realized it as I looked at the two of you during this vote. Bernie?
Yes, and then the next item was the house on Murray Street. We purchased that.
Two years ago.
Last summer.
No, it was June 12.
And we were using it as a, an office for, for support for the school. And that was not allowed use in that particular residential zone. And so we, we had to, we had to stop that use. And then, so we're moving forward and there were four, four different things that, that we could do with that house on Murray Street. One is to rent it, basically use it as its, as a residential rental property. Sell it. Go to Development Review Board and a conditional use for that property is classrooms. And so go to Development Review Board, ask for this conditional use. And in order to do that, we have to pay to take the housing units out of the housing stock for the city. So that's, there's basically three bedrooms and it's $9,000 a bedroom. So it's $27,000 to do that, plus the cost of renovating it for classroom use, which would be about $10,000. And then there's some legal fees. So it'd be about a $40,000 item. The fourth use is to apply for variance and use it as support services or support space. So it would be, it could be serving S A or it could be serving the district. But basically it would be used for, as office use. Again, we'd have to pay for taking it out of the housing stock. It'd be a little less construction costs, but that's a much longer process. You don't get variances overnight. So with that, we, it was a motion to, from I T C to rent the property for the time being while we consider what else we want to do, looking at what Brian Williams has in mind for use of the building and also to go through the process from the city if, if we want to do one of the, either the conditional use or the variance. So this would generate income, which would go towards the cost of doing that too. That's not all the motion. The motion was just to rent the property.
So can, would you just read the motion as I?
The motion to rent the property, well, I should describe the property. A motion to rent the Murray Street property. A motion to rent the Murray Street property for residential use.
Is there a second? Keith? I guess you've spoken a bit to it. You wanna say anything else before?
No, I don't.
Anybody else comment? If not, I certainly, go Rebecca.
I guess my comment isn't specific to the motion, my comment is about what information we had or did not have at the time of purchase, because I don't think our intent was confused at the time. I think we knew that we wanted to use this in particular ways that are now clear they are not allowed. And so what's the vetting process for us to agree to buy things if ultimately we're not allowed to use them for the purpose that we want them to?
Yep, that's a good question. And at the time, I, I felt that we could incorrectly, since it was our property and next to the school, that, that that could be an accessory use.
Right.
And that's not the case, because it's by, it is a separate property, even though it's the same owner.
It's really frustrating. And a little embarrassing, Quinn.
I guess I kind of, my first comment is to kind of say, yes, I agree with Rebecca from what I remember of the property at the time and what we were, what it was described to us. The second thing I would say is, I really don't want us to be, we should not be in the business of being a landlord, and I don't know if I didn't quite hear it as being described, but I would hope one of the things that we're looking at would be just a flat-out sale of the property if it in fact would require a significant amount of money to, you know, bring into some other kind of use. And, you know, like I said, I don't think we should be in the business of being a landlord if we need to take some time to see if there, you know, if there is a solution here, that's fine renting it, but I would, you know, I think the motion did say the current school year, I would, you know, not really be very much in favor of anything much longer, but I would want us to be looking at all options, and I'm gonna restate again, one of which would be selling the property.
Yeah, that was one of the options.
Keith.
Well, we bought it in June, so we didn't have any money in the fiscal, we didn't have any money in the fiscal 14 budget, the budget written out to renovate it, and that's where we're at, and we didn't really have a plan how we're gonna use it, I guess. I would have it disappointed that we didn't use it too, I'm pretty sure that's the right. If the fiscal 15 budget for capital projects is in there, so hopefully the money that we get and rent will help us to renovate that building this summer, that Brian, that principal at SA will have a plan to use, how that, I think we're gonna be, we need to use that building. But I think there has to be some discussions about how to do with self-esteem and who can go in there and, you know, not separating. I think there are a lot of issues that we probably didn't think about, about the students using the building, you know, where some students going from the, from SA into another building for something whatever, special services.
Right.
So there is that issue, I think Brian has to work that out, or the staff has to work that out.
Right.
So this will give us time to get, get some money to help with the renovation and work it through with the city, and hopefully we can negotiate the city so that we don't have to pay for that taxpayer isn't really enough to pay the other, have to pay the city to buy, for taking over two rental properties. That, that to me seems like we should be able to work that one out. We did not pay to take over the other building we bought because it is used for residential reasons. The student in there is residential life, which is why I think we thought, I don't know, I didn't think this, but, you know, the person who was in charge of it thought that we could probably not have to get away and pay the, the cost of taking over two rental units.
Liz.
This came up at the last five minutes of our committee meeting, and, and I share your frustration, and as a new board member, I didn't know anything about how the decision came about, why it came about, and what kind of money was used, if we bought it outright, whether we mortgaged it, I don't know. But I share your frustration, and at the, with the last five minutes in the committee meeting, renting it was really the only viable option because there isn't a plan. I agree that we should not be in the business of being a landlord, and I, you know, like to actually further amend the motion to say that, you know, we need a fully permitted plan presented to us, or a fully, a full, a plan ready for permitting presented to us by a date certain, where we will sell the, the building. I have to disagree with you, Keith, I think, you know, if we take a property off of the residential market in a city where we have a very severe housing crisis, we should pay, so just to, you know, go on the record about that comment.
Yeah, I just wanna quickly go with a point of order. You basically, you've made a motion that we.
I made an amendment.
You made amendment to the motion that we have, you've made a motion that we amended the existing motion to add the language, let me see if I have this ready, to have a fully permitted plan.
A plan that's fully ready for permitting.
Oh, a plan that's fully ready for permitting by a date certain.
Or we sell the property.
Otherwise, we look to sell the property. Is there a second for that amendment to the motion? Second to the amendment, Rebecca? So just, you know, point of order, we're now discussing the, basically this amendment that Liz has made. Liz, I kinda cut you off because I wanna make sure we had the motion on point, did you wanna speak to it a little bit more before?
Well, just that, you know, I think that there, I don't wanna make any assumptions about what the vetting process was, but there was no plan when it came time to do something about the building, so I feel like that fell through the cracks, and, you know, because it fell through the cracks, I think it was demonstrated to us that we need to have some stronger oversight and put a deadline, you know, or, you know, have more of a incentive to make something happen there. So I, I don't, I just didn't understand in the last five minutes of the meeting the reasons why we bought it, what it would be used for, there seemed to be a number of different ideas floated out there about what SA might actually need it for or do with it, and there just didn't seem to be any real coherent justification of the need.
Ben, did you have something to add?
Well, just, do we need to have an actual date in the motion as opposed to just the words "date certain"?
I think.
And I don't know what that would be.
I mean, I would, you know, as an individual board member, I would also suggest that we have a date.
I can't recommend one myself, because I'm not familiar with this kind of planning, so I don't know what's a reasonable amount of time.
In the meantime, would we be renting it or no? No renting it at all?
No, we'd be renting it.
So I think we need to give the tenants a year. I think we have to give them, you can't.
But depends on our lease terms. Do you know our lease terms?
Can I just take one second, let Jean speak for a second.
Thank you, I appreciate that. So the, as I'm hearing all the discussion and listening to new board members not being part of the original discussion, the original purpose we bought the house was not because we had a use for a house. The original purpose is we bought the house as part of our master planning concept that Sustainability Academy is landlocked, and a couple of years ago, a house on Champlain Street became available, and this board, in looking at their master plan, chose to purchase it as an investment in the future, and it coincidentally became a very useful site for a student with special needs who needed a residential program, and so it served two purposes. This house became available and it was brought forward to the board, again, not with a specific use in mind, but a long-term plan of increasing the green space around Sustainability Academy. And, you know, things like this don't come up often, and so the board bought it with a long-term use in mind. In the meantime, obviously, we're not gonna have a house sitting vacant, so we actually did use it at first to lease out. We actually ended up using it to lease, to an interim teacher who was filling a leave and came from another state and didn't wanna find, you know, couldn't easily find a place to live to fill this leave, so he leased the, the house. As we've been looking into, as that lease has come to an end and we've been looking into what appropriate use it is, we have been exploring the permit options and the zoning options, and it's clear it has to be used for an educational purpose and there's a definition of that, and so we did explore with Sustainability Academy about can we use a, move a classroom over there, because educational purposes is not just the accessory services, but the actual direct instruction to students. We have reached a point where our kind of window of figuring out what we're gonna use it for is running out of time, and we'll be in violation of zoning if we don't call the question, and yet we haven't yet fully determined how SA can use it for educational space, which is why it came forward to you as, then let's go back to leasing it. If you choose to keep it for your long-term plan of increasing green space, for now, let's live within the zoning permits, you know, the zoning regulations, lease it and allow a thoughtful process to occur as to, is there something SA can use it for? It may be that you choose to lease it until you eventually decide you're gonna use it for green space. You know, there is no reason why not. I mean, it's not the business you're in, but there is no reason why not, that you can't do that. Otherwise, if you choose not to lease it, we'll need to pay the city, either change the zoning or pay the city for the change, a waiver and the not using it for residential. But if that, hopefully that background kinda helps, it's not as though we bought a house and said, oh, now it's gonna sit here, we're gonna figure out what to do with it. We really bought it for long-term planning, and now we're dealing with the short-term actions of that long-term planning and what, what shall we do with it? And so the ultimate recommendation at ITC was to rent it for now and to allow, so that we stay within the legal aspects of zoning and permitting, and then allow us to search out the right use.
Appreciate the background, I think the question is, you know, with the amendment that's still on the table for the overall motion, which would be created a date certain, and as chair, I'm not technically supposed to be too involved in writing the motion, but I might suggest that we put a date certain, which would be a year out from now, with a regular leasing cycle, which would probably be November 1st, 2014. I would, I would make that as a, as a recommendation.
Friendly amendment.
What?
Friendly amendment.
Yeah, friendly amendment, and Liz is shaking her head yes, the second came from Rebecca. So you would put the, of 11/1, 2014. Mary.
I just hearing what happened before where we, someone was talking about how we had a plan, but we didn't have money in the budget, I can't think straight enough now to figure this out, but do we wanna pick a date that will work with our budget cycle? If we, we give a time certain of November, we're like in the middle of a budget cycle, right? Maybe we wanna do it at a time certain, right before we're setting our budget, or is that a good time because we're setting our budget? You see what I'm saying? So we don't end up in the same position where we have a plan but no money?
I would kinda say if we don't have the plan at 11/1, that would be, you know, if we don't have that plan at that time, if we do have the plan, then we go into the budget, yeah.
Is that good for the timing? Going into the budget?
I think it's in a pace at a time.
That's my question. Is that within budget? Because then that would give us time to put money in the budget.
It's already would be in the budget.
Right. Although the budget wouldn't start until the following year.
No, it would start until I won before.
Okay. All right, okay.
So can you just reread the amendment, or do you want me to?
I, I have made a motion to rent the Murray Street property for residential use.
Okay, that's the full motion, we need to make an amendment, we have to read the amendment first. Just the amendment first.
Okay. To have a plan that is ready for permitting by November 1st, 2014. Is that, did I miss something? Is that right?
Or?
Or we sell.
Or?
Sell the building.
Have a plan fully ready for permitting by November 1st, 2014, or look to sell the property.
Yes, that's my understanding of the motion. And Liz says yes. All in favor of the amendment to the motion, say aye.
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 All opposed? One opposed. The motion then on the table is that we rent the Murray Street property for the, we rent the Murray Street property as we look toward options for use in zoning allowance, and then the amendment is to have a fully permitted plan in place by November 1st, 2014, or sell the property, which is the final total motion. Bernie.
I'm worried about the fully permitted.
A plan for, it was a plan.
You don't have to have the permits, you just have to have a plan.
A plan for, ready for permitting.
Okay, all right.
Bernie, I'm sorry.
That's all right, we're interchangeable. So if I'm understanding the wording right, it would set up so that it would be leased for no more than one year.
Right.
Yes, that is the motion.
Okay.
I thought the first motion had residential, which residential.
It did.
Yeah, okay, I think it was probably as important for zoning, residential use, rented for residential use.
Rent, no, I shouldn't.
For residential. Do, should we read, full reread of the motion, is there, okay, could you do a full reread of the motion?
Made a motion to rent the Murray Street property for residential use and to have a plan ready for permitting by November 1st, 2014, or look to sell the property. Do we need to add a plan for what? Have a plan for the future of the building?
District use. The use.
I think it's, I think it's okay.
So a plan fully better for permit.
I think it's okay.
Get some in two counts.
Okay.
All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? So this motion passes, and this amended motion passes. Bernie, still see one?
One more motion.
You make up one of friends tonight.
A motion, a motion to seek board approval to amend agreement to include specific dates. No, I need to re.
Are you talking about the Champlain?
It's about Champlain College, yeah.
Champlain College?
Um.
Their graduation.
For the years of use already approved. Um, two, yeah.
Yeah, I'm just trying to get the word, the.
To include specific dates for Champlain graduation use for the years already approved. That help?
Yes, and it's through 2017.
Through 2017.
Is there a second for that motion? Keith?
And just some background, we, we rent the Edmonds, the East Playground to Champlain College every year for the graduation ceremony, and also they use the gym, I believe, one day for rehearsal, and then potentially they would use the gym for a rainy, a rainy day. And, and we receive $3,000 a year for the use of that property. So these, this sets out specific dates for, for 14, 15, 16, and 17 years.
Any further discussion? All in favor of this motion, say aye.
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 All opposed? So that carries. Anything else from ITC?
Just the Flynn project is wrapping up, they're back into the, the library, and they're going classroom by classroom, cleaning up all the, the little items on the punch list, and then as those get closed out, it'll be turned over to our staff and Mark Irish and Joel Fitzgerald, and, and their crew will go in and put up the smart boards, and I think they're installing cabinetry that, that we built in our shops, and so hopefully the, it'll be ready for move-in during the Thanksgiving week, so, and so it's right, right into the. And that's it. Next month, talk about Edmonds and VHS bonding and bussing, and also I guess we'll take on the subject of the archiving the photos.
Okay. Any else? Patrick, curriculum, please.
The main thing I wanted to say is that we're gonna talk about curriculum, calendar 2.0 at our next curriculum meeting, and we will have some certain motion to bring forward, as I already said, so I'm repeating myself. We met a couple times in between meetings, we had a discussion about one-to-one technology, we had a discussion about elementary Spanish and about the calendar. We had a discussion about elementary Spanish and about the calendar, and then we talked about budget priorities. But unless there are specific questions, I think the minutes are sufficient to answer that.
Okay.
I guess, I do want, are there any questions that anyone would like to?
Seeing none, I guess move on to diversity report.
The reports from the office are listed, are posted, so please read them. Ongoing, the budget obviously was a large conversation for us, particularly sort of how, how the intersection of the administration's goal-setting and Jeannie's plan in particular guide what diversity and equity are putting as priorities. My brain is really tired right now. I'm having a hard time pulling out information. And then the real, the only real action step, which is not a motion, but just sort of a reminder, is for Alan and me to schedule twice annual board professional development around diversity and equity.
And we had a discussion of planning committee, and I actually went back to look at the notes this morning, and I actually didn't see it quite reflected. We had looked to have a date in November?
Yes.
And then one again probably in February, if I remember.
Right.
Okay?
Right, and I just sent you an email.
Thank you, okay. Okay, so that, those are dates I've been looking at for.
Right. And there was some conversation at planning related to that about how do we work out the, sort of, the themes of those two trainings. Diversity and Equity inclusion are a very broad lens, and so do we break it down as inclusion within diversity and equity or a larger sort of umbrella that captures all of our students, and how are we anti-bias, anti-discrimination, as well as that differentiation piece for the needs of all the students, and how can the board have that information as well?
Anybody have any other questions for, any questions for Rebecca? I have one, Rebecca, and I want to make sure that the, do we need to be thinking about any or talking with the administration further about making sure that we have the committee in place to be working on the data collection for the data report this?
Jeannie, Jeannie's not here anymore.
Yeah, she has, she has had a couple things she's had to take care of offline, and so I've told her, she's not.
Okay, Jeannie and Nikki and I met separate from the committee and talked about, can you just ask your question again?
Yeah, it has to do with the data. Do we need to be doing anything else?
Right. Talked about the fact that the advisory committee, the equity advisory committee is not meeting right now, in large part because we're waiting for Duvern to start. So Jeannie and Nikki are going to work to sort of reinvigorate that committee with new, some new members.
Okay.
Before Duvern gets here, because Duvern's going to have an awfully big settling in to sort of get up to speed, and that should, we shouldn't be waiting for her specifically to get the advisory committee going, particularly since February is coming really fast, and it may be that the report comes early March rather than late February because of our timing right now.
And then also, another couple, heard from a couple places in the board of making sure that, you know, maybe reflecting this back to people that, you know, there's a ton of stuff in that report that can also kind of get lost, trying to see if, you know, the administration can say, okay, you know, here are the points that we've considered to be, you know, of highest value to make sure that we're, you know, focused, that we really are using this report for something of value, because there's so much important information in there that we're going to start capturing.
In the equity report?
Yeah.
As well as in the Gantt chart that Jeannie has, and that's really going to be the accountability piece month to month.
Okay.
In terms of what, what action steps are being done, and with the goal of.
With the goal.
Reducing disparity.
Yeah.
The equity report is sort of the one-year snapshot.
Yeah.
But the month-to-month happens on the Gantt chart, working towards that reduction.
Keith?
A student pilot survey, when is that going to be?
I know.
Liz, I was not there for Sparks's update. That wasn't discussed.
Well, my understanding is that is something that has to come out of the advisory committee. So until the advisory committee meets.
They haven't met.
There is no work being done on that.
But it is going to be done this year.
I sure hope so. That's, that's certainly the plan.
I think it would be important to, like, stress then with Jeannie and Nikki at this point that, you know.
That's okay.
That's probably something that should be focused earlier, as early as possible. Anything else? The last item on the agenda would be to consider an executive session. Would someone make a motion, and I guess if you do, to read into the minutes the motion has, is written in the agenda? And the motion would be to consider an executive session, or to have a motion to go into executive session to discuss a personnel matter where premature disclosure could place the school district at a substantial disadvantage. Is there a second to that? Yeah? Motion's been made, second is in the debate. Seeing none, all in favor of entering executive session, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, you're going to executive session, I think.